Okay, we will be following the meeting's order. It is seven oh two P M. Um, I know I'm not chairway, um, I'm Richard, I'll be chair for seven, so we. Officer. Uh, we will begin with our roll call.
Well, the roll call. Anderson. Arakaki.
Here.
Tissimo.
Oh, I'm sorry, Burgis.
Oh, here.
Wire.
Here.
Esperitu. Fitch.
Here.
Glenn.
Here.
Udu.
Yeah.
Here.
Mizusawa.
Here.
Vasquez.
Here.
Whitfield. Wood. Secret. Uh, yes, we have.
Thank you, Logan. Uh, we'll be going to monthly reports first, uh, Honolulu, our department, which should be online.
I've seen anyone.
Uh, he will, uh, defer for now, uh, Honolulu Police Department.
And everybody, you hear me? Okay. Good evening. I'm Sergeant Chase in the meeting with the Prostate Police Station. And our stats for the previous month of June. Uh, for Sector Three in A A is seven motor vehicle thefts. Seven burglaries, twenty thefts, seven U N Vs or vehicle break-ins. And our total calls for service for, um, June in District Three was six thousand one hundred and ninety-five. Do you have any questions?
Uh, our. Yes.
Uh, on TV, I have loved listening. There was something on Kalivokka with Locust Street that was on. It was, it had to be such kind of, you know, died with that gun and fire. It was all blocked on. Early in the morning. Can you recall that? The D T L, the white and banana probably local street, where that turned around. It involved some kind of, they did a shooting. I think it was fire. Yeah, it's something big because it wasn't in the morning news, TV. Can you recall?
Yeah, I'm not familiar with all the details that actually happened on our, our night watch shift going into the day watch, but yeah, individual barricading himself in the home. Uh, he was a suspect in a restraining order violation. Uh, he ended up, uh, from what I understand, setting the residents on fire and he did. Um. Try to attack the officers and they used deadly force against him. Unfortunately, he didn't survive from what I understand.
You know, it was that, somebody must fall away to the jails. That was the aftermath. Nobody died.
Sorry.
So it wasn't that serious. It was on TV and I hear everybody was looking. Prostate usually don't have that kind of dramatic stuff. Oh, I, oh, I'm sorry. This is I A R. I saw it on the morning news. Yeah, yeah, it's Prostate. We're connected to it, of course. Okay, drop it. But anytime you hear local news, it's, oh, I'm for that street. Okay, erase.
Um, any more board member questions? Uh, community, any questions? It's.
Another question. Why do I have all those bits? There's no parking signs posted. When I call in, if somebody's parking, we leave it. I call in as a police non-terrorist. As far as, um, follow-up, if I don't see anybody coming out in an hour or, what is the follow-up time? Because I understand as far as the staff, you may have issues with two staff in the area. But is there a follow-up time that I can call back if the wind comes up?
Um. Again, we get to every call, you know, as soon as we can. Um, if you feel that they haven't responded to the call, um, you can call in one-one again and, um, check with the dispatcher. And, um, if you feel that, um, it wasn't handled properly or that nobody came out, then they'll resend somebody. But we do try to get to every call as we can as, as, um, as quickly as we can.
Okay, so should I leave like an hour or two hours?
Uh, it, it's up to you. I mean, it, it all depends on what's going on that day. You know, there's, there's cases that are left pending for the next shift, you know, in some extreme cases. But, um, if you feel it's not being handled quickly enough, you can always call back and, and, um. Uh, if you're still not satisfied, you can ask for the on-duty supervisor for that area and you can, uh, meet with him or her like me and we can, um, get it solved.
So as far as, um. Let's see. I lost my train of thought. Um. Oh, get past. I lost my train of thought, sorry.
Okay, uh, any more? Yes.
Hi. Good evening. So I had someone steal my rubbish bin. And I felt guilty calling H P D to turn in, to call them, because that's the, the protocol, to call H P D to get an officer to come and make a report to get a theft. So is there a way not to take away an officer to do that and just call it in and make a. Instead of getting that report, because I really felt guilty for an officer to come to make that part for me. Is there a way that we can just call it in and make a report and get an offer?
Usually, um, if our, um, oh, yeah. Yeah, so usually if, um, our alternative calling system, which is they'll take cases over the phone. If they're not busy or backed up with cases, they can do your case over the phone if there's no suspect or witness information to provide with that report. What we call a cold theft case, there's no, no leads or anything like that. Um. The unfortunate part is everybody wants a police report number to document everything. So the refuse department. Even when they accidentally drop your bin into their truck. Um, they actually won't notify you or, or their supervisors in my experience. And then it's upon you to call and get a replacement. So they'll usually say, well, um, you know, you told us trash day and my trash bin is missing is most likely, I don't think somebody stole it. Fell into the refuse bin. Okay, well, either way, you know, we need a report number for documentation or theft. So. You're, you're kind of stuck in essence. Yeah, you still need to call us and we, we will, like I said, like the previous gentleman asked about servicing calls, we'll. We'll service it and get your report number and, uh, and, you know, that's just the way it is. Everybody wants some type of documentation. So. Like I said, don't, don't feel bad if, if you need a refuse bit replaced, because it's, it's important, it's a necessity, then by all means, just call us and we'll make the report for you.
Yeah, I, I know about the report, but I felt so guilty of the officer coming to give me a theft report. I rather have done it over the phone.
Well, yeah, those, those are different avenues. Like, like I said, we have that alternative calling system. Um, where people who are working behind a computer can do it over the phone and talk to you that way. Um. You know, there. That's what we have. If, if they're backed up, then of course we'll, we'll, we'll come and see you personally for those matters. Yeah, that's just how it is, you know.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you. Uh, yes.
You know, I have no parking signs posted on my street. Is it preferable or in a decent environment that I physically go out and tell the officer where the signs are? Because I know the dispatcher was asking me if I wanted to meet the officer, but I told him he's on sign reported on the street. But is it preferable that, um, I go out and meet officer on the street?
I'm sorry, kind of broke up. What to do on the street?
Oh, yeah, I have no parking signs posted on the street. And I just want to use it more for preference from the T C box and for even meet the officer or, or, you know where the signs are.
Um, if the signs are clearly marked, I don't think they're, they have a problem of finding it. Um. You know, we do have to verify that is a sitting county sign. Usually there's some type of, uh. Uh, documentation on the back of the sign to make sure that it's, it's a legit sitting county sign. Uh, we have people that have been creative, especially on private rules, try to put up, uh, no parking net sign that looks legit, but it's not, right? And of course, we don't enforce on private property. So the, the officers know what to look for as far as the proper legal signage whenever I'm enforcing the parking, the parking, um, violations.
Uh, any more questions? Uh, we will be taking a brief recess. We're in the remaining eight and four members of the board. Uh, quick reset.
I don't hear anything.
Okay, uh, we'll be, uh, calling back to order. Susan, sorry, we took a brief recess. Uh, it's just we're in a board member. Um, okay, so we'll be continuing on. Um. H F D is still not. Honolulu Fire Department.
I do not.
Okay, uh, we'll be going now to work business. Um, the election of officer, uh, disturbed from. Fly first, twenty twenty three to June there, two twenty twenty four. Um, the office of Chair, uh, wondered more by Chair. Uh, Secretary, Treasurer, and any other officers that were determined in a significant, uh, business. Um, one proposal is to add a Sergeant at Arms, uh, to help facilitate and keep time of our meetings. Um, uh, so that's. Uh, we will be going in order, uh, uh, we'll be starting by Chair, so open up the margin on the. Yes.
Can I ask something first?
Yeah.
You know, can we get to number two first before we start with that thing, our officers, with the new vacancies? Because we have to follow the rest of it, you know, we're talking about, can we have some other bank? Like a lot of us right now have been kind of satisfied with what's been right, and we've actually asked some members, who are members of the board, to try to come back onto the board. Right, like Chief Clark over here, and he had contacted, uh, called, so. Is there any way we can try and get to that number as soon as possible?
Inducted with that.
Uh, I can answer that.
Yes.
Uh, so you guys can choose to defer the election of officers to next, the next month or even later in the meeting, but at this point, if you guys don't, uh, elect your officers, then you can't, um. Basically establish, um. Means to do anything, because you guys aren't going to be able to elect people without, um. Yeah, without you guys electing your officers first. And then how you guys are talking about, this is later on in the agenda, the reorganizing, that's also something that's not going to take, take into effect right away, so. The best course of action, at least, um, talking to people from my office, is just to go ahead and go throughout the elections then. Or your office, office, officer elections, and then after that, be able to fill the vacant.
Okay. But I just clarify, point any, if the office does not have any takers, right, that, that would get deferred to a future meeting.
Yes, it would, um, if, if you guys don't choose to elect anyone at this time, whether there's no nominations or you guys can't decide on multiple nominations, then it'll just be postponed.
Is that not a table?
Yeah, so we can table, um, since they have permission that there is no.
I think that's not.
Our.
I'd like to move postpone your vote on the president.
Uh, the what's, what's Chair?
On Chair.
Um, is there a second?
Yes, okay, any discussion?
So.
Uh. Any other? Um.
Chairs.
Um.
That, right, yeah, right, only slide here.
Yeah, so you guys aren't available to, uh, but you guys aren't available to, uh, vote by proxy, so whoever's not independent, you guys can't appoint them, they can't, they can't be, uh, accept a position.
Okay. Okay, um, I think, um, some people are having trouble hearing the audio.
Uh.
Please, over here.
Oh, it's going to be. Okay, uh, any more questions, concerns? No? Okay, um, all in favor, um, say aye.
Aye.
All vote. Okay, uh, motion.
Uh, sorry, I could, uh, do a roll call if it's not, uh, clear.
Oh, okay, um, we can do a roll call, vote.
Yeah, I'll go ahead and do a roll call vote. The motion on the table currently is, uh. To postpone the election of Chair until the next I N A Hood Board meeting. This was a motion posed by, uh, Member Fitch and seconded by Member Burgis. Anderson.
Abstain, I'm just too new.
Arakaki.
I'll vote.
Burgis.
Aye.
Wire.
Abstain.
Esperitu, Esperitu. Fitch.
Wire.
Glenn.
Abstain.
Imamura Udu.
Yes.
Mizusawa.
Uh, aye.
Vasquez.
Oh.
Whitfield. Wood. The motion does not pass, uh, vote of six. Six ayes, two noes, and three abstentions.
Okay. Okay, so we'll continue with the, um, nominations for Chair, but just a reminder, if we don't have any nominations, then it would defer anyway to a following meeting.
How many? Our members invested in Chair.
Okay. Do you accept nominations? Okay. Any? Other takers? Okay, um, we'll close the floor.
Uh, no, if there's no other nominations, then we'll go ahead and do another roll call vote to see.
Okay.
So the current, uh, nomination on the table is to nominate Member Vasquez, uh, for the position of Chair. This motion was put forth by Member Arakaki. Anderson.
Yes. There's only one person, right?
Yes, there's only one nomination.
She wins by default?
No, you can, you can.
I think we can do it, but we've done biacclamation in the past, I believe. But.
There's no objections from. Chair, if you elect or buy.
You guys still need to go through and, uh, do a roll call, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, just, just that way.
Yes.
Yes. Arakaki.
Yes.
Burgis. Wire.
No.
Esperitu. Fitch. Glenn.
Um, I had my hand up for a question. Uh, did Chair Wood not express any desire to continue on as Chair?
Uh, he's not, well, he's not, he's not here right now. Um.
Yeah, yeah, Paul, I mean, the thing is, is he's not present at this time, so we, I mean, we still have to go forth with the election of officers and business. We're just voting on the motion on the table, so.
In, in that case, I vote no.
Thank you. Imamura Udu.
Yes.
Mizusawa.
Uh, yeah.
Vasquez.
Yes.
Whitfield.
Same.
Wood. The motion does not pass with a vote of seven ayes, two noes, and two abstentions.
It doesn't pass because we don't have the.
You guys don't have quorum at this point to elect someone as Chair.
The, the number eight.
Yeah, eight, eight is the number you guys need in order to have the motion pass.
Oh, I see, okay. Okay, thank you for clarifying. Okay, um, do we move down to the next?
Uh, you guys have to go to, either to another vote. Or if, that way, if someone wants to change their minds, or it would be postponed.
Um, so we reopen the floor for nominations.
Or if there's, yeah, any other nomination.
Yeah. Uh, if no one, if no one else decides to run. Any other nominations?
Because we can't decide anything else on the agenda, right?
Uh, no, well, well, if, if there are no more takers, then we'll move on to Vice Chair. And then following that, and we think we'll continue on with the agenda. It's just we won't have an elected Chair until a subsequent meeting. Oh, yes, Board Member Arakaki.
So, can you can get to number two unless we get to share the vote upon you?
No, um, if, if we elect a Vice Chair, for example, then they'll run the meeting.
Sir, we don't have a court to do it.
Uh, we just didn't have a quorum to pass the motion.
Can I say something?
A Board Member, yes.
I've been in the board from I G L, Kalini. Living up for almost forty years. So I thank you to all those that voted for you because, um. I just thank you all. So even if we did it, I didn't get the votes. I can't post to vote in for you. But let's just go.
Okay, thank you. Um.
I'm sorry, is that a motion to postpone?
Yeah.
The election.
Election of Chair.
Yeah, okay. Any second? Uh, Board Member Fitch, second. Okay, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, uh, would, is this a roll call vote or? Can we do it? I think if it's not clear, then it's a roll call, so, um, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All a pose? All a pose? Okay, motion carries. So, yes.
Voice.
Yes, yeah, and then because it was clear that the ayes had it, then it passes. Yeah. Okay, uh, we'll be moving down to the, okay, so the Chair election will be postponed to a future meeting.
Next meeting.
Yes, next meeting. Um, okay, so next we'll be moving down to Vice Chair. Uh, we'll open up the floor for nominations. Yes. Okay. Ready?
Oh, we don't need a second for nomination, okay, then.
Okay, um, any more nominations?
Richard, uh, could you repeat the motion? Uh, some, when the background people that are away from the microphone, it's hard to hear them.
Oh, yeah, so, oh, yeah, so, um. Okay, so we are voting, uh, we are, the nominations are open right now for Vice Chair of the Neighborhood Board. Um, and currently Board Member Vasquez, uh, was nominated.
I'm looking at the nomination, be told. Yeah.
Oh, uh, can, um.
There's no need, if there's no other nomination.
There's no other.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, um, but if there's no nominations, then we can just close it. Just close it. Um.
I'd like to nominate Richard.
Oh, okay. Oh. Um.
I have my hand up.
Okay, um. Okay, um. We can have, uh, I guess, my question is, we can have more than one, we can have more than one in the board.
Yeah, so, yeah, so. Then everyone.
Okay. Um, so that's an option. So that's an option.
Sorry, Mike, could you, sorry, Mike, could you?
Their way down.
I, I'm ready for first vice president.
Vice Chair, yes.
Uh, yeah, so that's an option to have two Vice Shares if the board wishes. Um, there's two nominees, so.
We have to choose one of them.
So second Vice Chair.
So, I think both can be Vice, just Vice Shares.
So right now. The nomination for Vice Chair that was made by, uh, Member Burgis is for Vasquez Derna. And then the nomination by Member Dwyer was to have, uh, you, Member Mizusawa, as Vice Chair, which would be first Vice Chair. Second Vice Chair is a completely different position.
Yes, but could we have two that are just equal?
No.
Oh, okay, it has, it would have to be a first and second.
Yeah, this is just for the position of Vice Chair right now.
Okay, okay.
But I chose a nomination.
Oh, no one seconded it, so, um, yeah. Okay.
So do you accept the nomination?
Um.
I discussed.
Yeah, can't, uh, Board Member.
Um, so, the point, the point of having a first and a second Vice Chair. Um. If Chair is unavailable, the first Vice Chair runs the meeting. The purpose of having a second Chair is because when normal meetings are going and the Chair is running the meeting and he wants to talk, which we've had this happen a lot. The, the Vice Chair. Sorry, first Vice Chair is supposed to have the gavel. When the Chair wants to talk. And that's what we need to get on top of. Um, when he's not available, there's the first Vice Chair who runs the meeting as Chair. And then the second Vice Chair has to take over the gavel when the first Chair wants to talk. That's the important purpose of having a second Vice Chair.
Okay, thank you for clarifying. Um, did you have a preference on?
Actually, just, uh.
Yeah, it, 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 it's whether you accept the nomination or not. If you accept it, then we can go to a vote if there's no other nominations.
Yeah, um. Uh, I'll, I'll accept.
Okay. And if there's no other nominations, I can.
Okay, any more nominations?
I have a question.
Yes.
Never had a second Vice Chair. And if we don't know this, what their jobs are, are we clear what their job, when it comes to the thing, everybody would be confused. But I know of the setup, yeah, the Vice Chair and.
Yeah, oh, yeah, thank.
In the past, we haven't.
Yeah, so I know in the past we haven't, but. Uh-huh.
It's going to be unknown.
Yeah, Board Member Whitfield, um, just explained that, you know, um, having the sec, having a first and second, if the Chair is not there, right? You can pass the gavel on to your second if you want to talk, if you're Vice Chair and running the meeting. So I think, I think there is some clarity to that.
Didn't it go like tonight, because the Chair's not here? The Vice President, the Vice Chair is vacant. So the next one, the one with you, so they don't need a separate Chair.
Can I say something? This is, it is like sugar.
Well. Okay, so, oh. Are you, are you?
Doing a good job. We're taking too much time on this, so we just.
Okay, so are you, um, declining? Okay. Okay, um. Okay, any other nominations? Okay, uh, we'll close nominations.
Member Dwyer has to handle.
Oh, yes, uh, Board Member Dwyer. Board Member Dwyer.
I had my hand up to nominate you. It was.
Oh, yes, I, oh, yes, I, yes, um, I, I accept. Okay, um, so we close the floor. Um, I think we have to do a roll call.
Yeah, if there's no other discussion.
If there's no other discussion, then we'll do a roll.
Okay, so.
Uh, at the, at the current moment, we can decide to add more later if we wish.
Okay, so the current motion on the table, uh, was made by Member Dwyer to nominate Member Mizusawa for the position of Vice Chair. Anderson.
Yes.
Arakaki.
Oh, yes.
Burgis.
Aye.
Wire. Wire.
Aye.
Esperitu. Finch.
Aye.
Glenn.
Aye.
Imamura Udu.
Aye.
Mizusawa.
Uh, aye.
Vasquez. Whitfield.
Aye.
Wood. Motion passes. Uh, eleven ayes, zero noes, zero abstentions.
Thank you. Thank you, Board. Um, we'll be moving down to the Office of Secretary. Uh, we'll be opening up the nominations.
Hey. Please, our.
Okay.
Second?
Oh, no need second, yeah. Okay, uh, any other nominations for Secretary? No? Okay, uh, we'll be closing nominations. Uh, Board Member Arakaki is the nominee, so we'll be voting on that right now with a roll call.
Okay, the motion on the table made by Member Arakaki, or I'm sorry, made by Member Vasquez is to nominate Member Arakaki. Okay, the motion on the table made by member Arakaki, or I'm sorry, made by member Vasquez is to nominate member Arakaki for the position of secretary. Anderson?
Aye.
Arakaki? Burgrest?
Aye.
Dwyer? Dwyer?
Aye.
Esperitu? Finch?
Aye.
Glenn?
Aye.
Imamura Udu?
Aye.
Mizusawa?
Aye.
Vasquez? Whitfield?
Aye.
Wood? Motion passes, eleven ayes, no, no noes, no abstentions.
Okay, thank you, uh, congratulations, board member Arakaki. Uh, we'll be going down to treasurer, uh, we'll open up the nominations for this office. Oh, thank you, board member Whitfield nominating, uh, okay, oh, no need second. But thank you for your engagement. Okay, any other nominations? Okay, uh, we'll be closing the nominations, uh, board member Fitch is the nominee, uh, so we'll be doing a roll.
Okay, motion on the table made by member Whitfield to nominate member Fitch for the position of treasurer. Anderson?
Aye.
Arakaki?
Aye.
Burgrest?
Aye.
Aye.
Dwyer? Dwyer?
Aye.
Esperitu? Esperitu? Bitch?
Aye.
Glenn?
Aye.
Imamura Udu?
Aye.
Mizusawa?
Aye.
Vasquez?
Aye.
Whitfield?
Aye.
Wood? Pass, the motion passes, eleven ayes, no noes, no abstentions.
Okay, thank you, uh, congratulations, board member Fitch. Um, the last position, um, is sergeant at arms, so this is a new position, and just to reiterate, um, this was proposed to add, um, to have someone help facilitate timekeeping, um, of our meeting, uh, so. Just wanna, we'll open up nominations if there should be any for sergeant at arms. Yes, uh, board member. Okay. That is part of your, your, your. Okay, um, any other nominations? Okay, uh, we'll close the floor to nominations, um, so board member Vasquez is the nominee, so we'll do a roll call vote.
Great, so the motion on the table made by member Arakaki to nominate member Vasquez for the position of sergeant at arms. Anderson? Arakaki? Burgrest?
Aye.
Dwyer?
Aye.
Esperitu? Bitch?
Aye.
Glenn?
Aye.
Imamura Udu?
Aye.
Mizusawa?
Aye.
Vasquez?
Aye.
Whitfield?
Aye.
Wood? Motion passes, eleven ayes, no noes, no abstentions.
Okay, thank you, congratulations, board member Vasquez. Okay, um, so we'll be moving down to the second, um, agenda item, filling of vacancies. Uh, so we currently have two, uh, vacancies in subdistrict one and one in subdistrict four, um, so we will be seeing if there are any residents interested in be, filling any of these, uh, vacancies. So did anyone contact you before? Yes. Mr. Clark?
Yeah, um.
Logan?
Yeah, that's my mistake, um, Phil, um, I checked your, uh, residency and you're actually a member of subdistrict three, so not currently one of the open, uh. Sorry? Uh, it just happened, um, earlier today.
Oh, yeah, that is subdistrict three.
Yeah, I, I'm not too sure, I, uh, I only had, uh, what was available on our website, and when I checked your address, uh, a little more thoroughly, it says that you're a resident of subdistrict three, not a subdistrict one. Sorry?
When was, oh, no, it's, you know, subdistrict three.
It's always been.
It's always been, yeah.
For forever.
Always been.
No.
Somebody tell me?
I'm not aware.
Yeah, that, that's how, you, you were, um, subdistrict three when you were on the board? Oh, you were on, you were, um, represented subdistrict three when you were on the board?
We should, uh, just carry on if there's any other volunteers.
Okay. Yeah, I, but according to his record, that you're currently three.
Do you have the, um?
Yeah, I can, uh, yeah, I can show it to you.
Okay. Okay, uh, well, let's go over subdistrict, uh, Logan will be pulling up the boundary map, um, so that we can check. Yes. They're here, okay. Okay, um. Okay, um. Fire department's ready, but that's, we should finish this, right? The vacancy report.
Yeah, we should, um, if there's any other.
Uh, yes, board member Arakaki?
Yeah, absolutely, I, I would just, uh, recommend that we're not at that point in the agenda yet, would be my only thing.
So we can open it up and then, if, if no one, yeah.
If there's no, no volunteers that can fill the current vacancies based on, um, the current, uh, what, the two in subdistrict one and the one in subdistrict four, then we can, then there's no volunteers for those subdistricts.
Uh, if the board wishes to take action on it, yeah.
Do you want to check?
Check, check what?
That's really the bottom, just to prevent any more complication.
I, 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 I just printed, uh, the, the, um, the sheet that I handed Bill, I just reprinted it in preparation for tonight's meeting, because I, I knew that there was gonna be some, um, some volunteers.
Uh, no, he, 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 according to his list, he does not live in subdistrict.
Have to check that out. To make sure.
Yeah, I, I don't, it has.
This is his board. You guys, you guys act together, I'm telling you.
Okay. Okay, um, well, we're gonna continue, um, to see if there are any, uh, interested residents who would like to fill the vacancies, um, starting with subdistrict one.
Oh, there's no volunteers in general.
Oh, there's a hand up.
Uh, Garner Shimizu.
Everyone, can you, can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, uh, Garnishimizu, uh, wanna welcome and congratulate the new board, thank you for serving. Um, I would be interested in serving on the board, but, um, I live in Honolulu Valley, and I, I'm not sure, uh, what subdistrict that is.
Oh, um, Mr. Shimizu, I believe Honolulu Valley is not in a part of our neighborhood board.
Oh, okay. Okay, thanks for clarifying that.
Yes, thank.
Yeah, Garner, if you can, I mean, shoot me an email at another date to, uh, possibly get a, so I can, yeah, so I can get the street checked for you, but, um.
Neighborhood number seven.
Yeah, I don't think. Yeah, but that's definitely not part of IAS.
Okay. Okay, sure, I'm sorry.
Okay, no, no, thank you for your interest.
All right, thank you.
I think you were on here when we had the election. Didn't you run for three? You were chair then, yeah, I remember there were your name, yeah. Wasn't it three?
Four is three then.
What were you, three or four?
Yeah. Okay, uh, well, we're gonna, we're gonna continue on, and then we can further discuss later, okay? Um, any other subdistrict one residents interested in running now? Okay, uh, we will, um, there are no, uh, residents interested, we're moving down to subdistrict four. No? Okay. Okay, I apologize, um, sir. Doesn't look like there are any other nominees, okay? Okay, so we still have our three vacancies, um, on the board. Um, we will be moving down to, uh, board business number three, uh, meeting date, time, location, and format, so. Um, at the last meeting, we did decide to change our meetings to the second Tuesdays of the month at seven in the library. Um, this is just to re, I guess, re, um, re-finalize, um, if this is what we wish to continue moving forward. And then whether we want to have, you know, in person or online, right, as the format.
The format of meetings, whether you want to continue being, uh, hybrid or.
Yeah, okay, um, am I allowed to, uh, entertain a motion to?
You can open it up to.
Yeah. Okay, uh, can I entertain a motion, and then we can discuss, um, to keep the meetings on the second Tuesdays of the month at seven in the library, uh, but have a hybrid format? So someone can make this motion? Yes, board member Fitch, any seconds? Board member, we're just, okay, uh, any discussions?
I'm opposed to it, because it conflicts.
Okay. Okay. Any other discussions? Claire, did you have a question? Okay. Okay. Uh, if there are no other, uh, comments, um, all in favor of the motion, say aye. All opposed?
All opposed.
I can just do a.
Uh, okay, let's do a, we're gonna do a roll call.
So the current motion on the table is to keep the IAA neighborhood board number twenty regular meetings.
Regular meetings on the second.
On the second Tuesdays.
On the second Tuesdays of the month.
On the second Tuesdays of the month. At seven o'clock PM at IAA Public Library with an online component in webex format. Anderson?
Aye.
Arakaki? Burgrest?
Aye.
Aye.
Dwyer? Dwyer?
Aye.
Esperitu? Bitch?
Aye.
Glenn?
Aye.
Imamura Udu?
Aye.
Mizusawa?
Aye.
Vasquez?
Aye.
Whitfield?
Aye.
Wood? Motion passes, eleven ayes, no noes, no abstentions.
Okay, thank you. Um, so we are keeping the second Tuesdays at seven in the library, uh, with a hybrid format, so. Um, we're moving forward. Yes, so starting, well, start today and then starting in August, okay. Um, the next item, yes. Oh, yeah, we're.
Not entertaining this right now, we're.
Yeah, we're, we're not on that, right? Um, I think we are gonna be discussing something similar to that in a future agenda item, yeah, okay, so we can cover it then, okay. Um, the next agenda item is determination of recess schedule, um, having up to three per year. Um, so I believe we've been doing August, December, and May or June as our recess month, so, so, um. Oh. Yes, uh, or, remember Dwyer?
Uh, we're allowed to have three, we're not required to have three. I'd like to see us go to just taking December and forego the other two. We have business during the year, and sometimes we've had business and it turns, turns up, it, we had a recess, and the business either is overcome by events, or it just doesn't get addressed at all. So I'd like to propose that we just do one, and it be December, because not much happens in December, and people don't come.
Okay, um, are you ma, are you ma, are you making? Um, are you making a motion to, uh, propose December as our recess month? Board member Dwyer? Sorry, can you repeat that?
Mike, uh, you're, uh, muted.
Oh. Is he frozen?
I'm, I'm.
Or can you, are you making?
I'll, I'll make the motion, we can discuss it, if, uh, nobody else agrees with the idea, we can move on and do what everybody else wants to do.
Okay. Okay, is there a second?
Is there a second?
He wants, uh, he's. Any seconds?
Any seconds?
No, okay, sorry, the motion.
Okay, sorry, the motion.
Okay, um, can I?
Can I?
Yes, board member Fitch?
The three days you get, I haven't heard of the last, right?
Okay, um, so how, I will, um, just entertain the, what we've been doing so far, um, can I entertain a motion to have the recess months be August, December, and June, wasn't it? June, yeah, okay. So if someone can make that motion, uh, board member Fitch, any seconds? Board member Vasquez, okay, now, any discussions on the motion?
August.
Uh, August, December, and June as the recess months.
That one was before?
Uh, yes, I believe May sometimes, yeah, yeah.
One time, chair forgot the key. No meetings.
Yeah. Yes.
Yeah, so I, just to make a comment on that, uh, yeah, you guys have, uh, cancellations in the past, so what you could do is just make, make a motion to have, uh, I mean, we have a motion on the table, but. To, uh, just have two scheduled recesses and then leave one open, but, yeah, but it, I mean, you guys have a motion on the table, we can carry this out, and then if you guys need to at that point.
Yeah, makes sense.
Okay, actually, you know, um, yeah, May was the scheduled recess though, from this past year, right?
Uh, I don't know off the top of my head.
Okay, just because June, June and August are actually really close to each other, so I kind of want to avoid, so I can, could you amend the motion to? May.
I want to be in session when I legis.
Okay, 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 so let's. June, August, and December, okay, that's what's currently on the table. Okay, uh, any more discussion?
Uh, we have, uh, member Dwyer.
Uh, member Dwyer, sorry.
That was my hand up to make the proposal for only one recess. You can take my hand down, thank you.
Okay, thank you, board member Dwyer, okay, if there are no other, um, comments or discussion, um, all in favor of the motion, say aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Our recesses will be August, December, and June. Okay, uh, the next agenda item is adoption of. Oh, I'm sorry, uh, we will, um, uh, go back to the Honolulu Fire Department, I apologize, thank you for, um, being here. Oh, they did, they were.
Hello, good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Uh, thank you for, uh, allowing me to present, uh, sorry for being late. So for our report, we had two structured fires, two wildland brush fires, two nuisance type fires, twelve activated alarms with no fire. A hundred and twenty-one medical calls, five motor vehicle collisions, one mock and rescue, one hazardous material incident, uh, in the IAA area this past month. Uh, the safety tip is for grilling safety, and the tips are always use barbecue grills outside, away from doors, windows, vents, and other building openings. Place the grill well away from sliding and deck railings, and out from under eaves or overhanging branches according to the manufacturer's instructions. Keep children and pets at least three feet away from the cooking area, and keep starter fluid, lighters, and matches out of children's reach. Cook with caution, be alert, and stay at the grill while cooking, never leave a hot barbecue unattended. Letting propane grill only with the cover open. If the flame is on the propane, well, if the flame is on and the propane goes out, turn the grill and gas off, and wait for at least five minutes before relighting. Periodically remove grease or fat buildup in trays below the grill, so it cannot be ignited by a hot grill. Let the coals completely cool before disposing in a metal container. Never empty coals directly into a trash can. Do not store or use a grill on a porch or balcony, including any porch or balcony on the upper level of the building. Always store propane tanks outside of the building or garages. Remember to properly inspect and maintain the tanks, fittings, and tubing according to manufacturer's instructions. Vapors leak in, leaking indoors can easily be ignited. Vapors leak in, leaking indoors can easily be ignited by the pilot lights or electrical equipment and cause an explosion. Do you have any questions for the Honolulu Fire Department?
Okay, uh, any questions? Yes. No, uh, community, yes.
I couldn't hear what the question was. Could somebody repeat that, please?
Wake up a little bit louder into the, uh.
Who is responsible for the area around the fire hydrant if there's a lot of weeds and brush that's going around the fire hydrant?
Um, generally, it's whoever is responsible for that grassy area, if it's the homeowner, then it's the homeowner most, that's the hydrants directly in front of, or if it's generally city property, then I guess the city maintenance when they come by, or if it's on a state right away, um, like a highway or something, then that would be the state's jurisdiction, but um, we don't cut the grass and everything around the fire hydrants, it's usually whoever's in charge of that piece of, of grass or area. If you do see a hydrant that's blocked by debris, grass, overgrowth, you can call the, the fire department, um, and then we can uh, refer that to whatever, um, the proper authorities would be for that piece of property.
The reason I'm asking, my neighbor is very Calgary. So when I cut the grass in front of my home, I try to go out in front of her house. But the fire hydrant doesn't have a height and it's just sitting on the dirt. It's on the city and county property, that's what it is on that on your pool sidewalk. There'll be a neighbor's responsibility to cut out all that weed with some hydrant.
I think it depends on the community, um, I'm not sure about I A, who takes care of the, the the green areas in between the sidewalk and the street, if that's the area you're talking about. Um, whoever is responsible for that area would be the one in Mililani or in some other areas, the, the, the owner of the house that fronts that area is responsible for that green area in front of their house, but I'm not sure about the specific area, so if it's overgrown, grown, you could call, um, the fire department, contact us, and then we can uh, try to figure out where that location is and then refer that area to the proper person that's in charge of, if it's a city property, for managing that part of land.
Okay, oh, sir, could you, um, state your name just for the record?
It's on the whole place. But my neighbor's elder, so it probably cut the grass in front of my home, probably wrong.
Okay, thank you, and just a reminder, um, if, uh, community members can speak your name before, um, just for the record, so, okay.
Thank you, Chair, Captain, Pacquiao, Millie, Ward, and Mars, I'm Jupita, please call us, we're acting. Uh, we're actually responsible for most of the maintenance of fire hydrants and our number is eight oh eight. It's okay, eight oh eight, seven four eight, five zero four one. And we'll send somebody out and if we determine we don't own it like, uh, gentleman said in the Lali, we will make sure it gets to the right department, but that'll save you from falling. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
The Shireman is firing. Monoloid, it could go into I A. Of city and I A, you know, those trees that fall along the fenced area? And then I, I was told that there are people, it was firmy trees that hang over. But when, they can't do some high one, you know, the high ones. But they were told that we started that the leaves and things fall into the monoloid's hole. They have tried, some of them have put the trees drastic, which are trees that are stepped. But is it a whole office responsibility or, you know, sort of a fire and tell them a lot of different trees because they're causing all this rubbish to go on and allow that sidewalk? Because a lot of the big row more weeds than they have to go and kill the, you know, insecticide or something, but it gets really bad, you know, the trees that hang over, you know, the leaves fall, no one picks it up. I have seen people cut their trees purposely that the leaves prevent them, monoloid and I A have. That monoloid road as well, because that used to be the backyards, right? And they all had big mango trees and now they gave it up. I love one of those trees, everybody, they're trimmed. But whose responsibility is it to not let those trees fall over and create all that rubbish? Sometimes they break, yeah. But I have seen people literally cut their trees so that they don't fall into their. There's no ordinance to, you know, prevent because I've seen people, well, they hire expensive and to hire people, the trees. No rubbish for their self and also going through them. But there's no ordinance to, the trees should not hang over. Because I've seen people, I just know that they're cutting their trees, they look nice. When they come, maybe it's sunny, probably it's not H M B and so on, okay, city and come. I see that every day. I don't like it. Yeah, move on.
Okay.
It's okay. But I saw it.
Okay, um. Any other comments, discussion, yeah? Okay, all right, thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you very much, I'm good.
Okay, thank you. Um, sorry, just to clarify, um, the, we're having trouble having the, um, the community, um, speaking to the microphone, so if you want to, um, speak, uh, if you can come a little closer, uh, just as. Uh, when we, moving down to, uh, Board Business number five, adoption of oral testimony rules. Uh, so we put this on the agenda because, uh, just to see if there is interest for the board to change the amount of um, speaking time, whatnot for different, uh, parts of the agenda, so if you look at your agenda, board business is, uh, limited, limited to ten minutes each. Um, monthly reports are, monthly reports, uh, residents and dental officials, that regular reports are two minutes each. Um, so this would be the time to change that through a motion if the board wishes, but if I believe if we want to just keep it how it is, we can, we don't have to make a motion.
What are the current standards?
Sorry, uh, what are current standards?
Uh, what are, what are our rules as we stood from the last, uh, term?
Yeah, so, um, yeah, so, um, everything is three minutes except for board miss, business is, uh, presentation for board business is limited to ten minutes. But everything else is three. Okay. Um, and, and just, just to kind of put a note in, um, now that we have a sergeant-at-arms, they, um, Board Member Gass, yes, yeah, can keep track of it, so. Um, but if there is no appetite to change, we don't have to make. Okay, uh, we will be moving down to designation of board committees and committee chairs. Um, so if you look on the back of the agenda, um, the undercommittees, this is the current structure we had from the last term, um, uh. Does, does it need to be the chair that appoints?
Yeah, and so, so currently, your guys' committees are dissolved as of the new term, so if you guys wanted to remake these committees, then now would be the time to motion to either become chair of said committees or basically to have these committees represent the board in whatever, uh, whatever area that you guys want.
Okay. Okay, um.
You guys can also just motion to keep the committees, but.
I'm motion to continue keep the committees as is.
Okay, um. Including the its memberships and chair for just the committee. Should be established committees first, then at the board audit.
As, as far as I know, it would be just to establish the committee, and then you would have to rejoin them.
Okay, okay, um. Okay, uh, Board Member Vasquez made a motion to retain the committees, um.
Yes, yes.
Any second.
You say.
Okay, uh, Board Member Imura, any discussion? Okay, so the committees are Executive, Transportation, Community Relations and Publicity, uh, Parks and Recreation, Planning and Zoning, Restoration Advisory Board, Red Hill Fuel Tanks, and Education. Um, if there's no discussion, uh, we'll be doing a voiceful this time. No call, okay, uh, we'll do a roll call then.
All right, so the motion on the table made by Member Vasquez and seconded by Member Imura is to keep the current committee structure with the Executive Committee, Transportation Committee, Community Relations and Publicity Committee, Parks and Recreation Committee, Planning and Zoning Committee, Restoration Advisory Board Committee, Red Hill Fuel Tanks Committee, and Education and Culture.
One more missing question, right?
Oh, it's on here.
Oh, okay, okay.
Anderson. Arakaki. Burgis. Wire. Wire.
Aye.
Esperitu. Fitch.
Aye.
Glenn.
Aye.
Imura.
Aye.
Mizusawa.
Aye.
Vasquez.
Aye.
Whitfield. Wood. Motion passes.
Okay, thank you, so the committees are reestablished for this next term. Um, now I believe we can add, um, chairs for the committees and even ones to join. Uh, are we allowed to ask the volunteers first then make motions?
I think it would be the same as just, uh, some donations.
Um, okay, okay, uh, but do we need it in individual schmunk or can we do like a all same motion?
Uh, I believe you guys can do an all, I'm just wanted, just, I, I don't know the exact specifics of the your best committees, but that would have to be made.
Okay. Yeah, yeah, so, um, how, so can I go down and ask the volunteers? Do an overall motion, so one. Um, shares and members for those.
If that's something you want to do it.
Okay, I think that's the easiest. Um, start with the executive, um, my suggestion would be to leave this one open, um, possibly for the chair to be, um, that's okay. Um, without the transportation, are there any members?
Like, we don't.
Okay, uh, Board Member Fitch. Okay, that's fine. Um, anyone wanting to give that word, chair, yes?
That'd be a real question.
Yes. And anyone else? Anyone wants to volunteer to chair? That okay?
Uh, sure. Have to double check, but I think it would be best if one of you guys, if you guys both are going to be members and it's just the two of you at this point, then one of you guys should ideally become.
Okay, okay, for now, um, okay, anyone else interested in transportation? Okay, Board Member Whitfield, um, or? Okay, uh, we'll close that then. Uh, moving down to Community Relations and Publicity, Board Member Vasquez. Okay. Since she's volunteering to be chair.
Yes.
Um, I'll be on it. Okay, uh, Board Member Whitfield wants to be on there, anyone else? Okay, uh, moving down to Parks and Recreation.
I volunteer for Parks and Recreation.
Okay, uh, Board Member Glenn.
I might want to go on that too because since I have that to, um, peanuts.
Okay, okay, so Board Member Vasquez and, uh, Glenn. Um, any, anyone want to volunteer as chair? Or Member Glenn?
Board Member Glenn would be chair.
Sure, I will be chair.
Okay, thank you. Uh, anyone else? Okay, uh, we'll move down to Planning and Zoning. Okay. You want to be chair?
Yeah.
Okay, uh, or any other, anyone else interested? Okay, uh, Board Member Whitfield and, uh, Board Member. Okay, um, moving down to Restoration Advisory Board. I don't remember who was chair of this. Okay, sorry, we want to stand. Okay, Board Member Whitfield would be Restoration Advisory Board. Anyone else? Okay, uh, we have, sorry, you say as chair? Yes. Okay, um, next is Red Hill Fuel Tanks.
I nominate Tracy.
Okay, anyone else? Yeah, uh, Board Member Whitfield. So you're both on, but anyone who wants to vote. Okay, you want to be chair too? Okay, uh, so Board Member Arakaki, Whitfield, who want to be on it and as chair, so.
Okay, so we can just do a separate vote for that.
Okay, so we'll just separate vote for that. After, yes, okay, Board Member Spirit, who wants to be on?
On there, be on the brush.
Yes, and Board Member. Okay, um, so again, well, we're, just how we're going to lay it out, we're going to do a motion to appoint everything that we just went over separately, a few times we do that. Okay, um, and last is Education and Culture, um, Board Member Spirit.
And, um, and, um, I would be on that.
Okay, Board Member Vasquez would be on, and you want to be chair? Yes, anyone else? Okay, Board Member Anderson will be Education and Culture. Okay, okay, um, sorry, no, that was quick, uh, so what we'll be doing is, um, I'll entertain a motion to appoint everyone who wanted to be on these boards and the chairs, um, with the exception of the Red Hill Fuel Tank.
But I can read it out.
Yes, um, yes, if you can.
Okay, so. So the motion that, uh, Vice Chair is entertaining is to have the Transportation Committee uh, with Member Fitch, Member Burgis, and Member Whitfield all have seats on that committee. Community Relations and Publicity Committee or Member Vasquez to be chair and Members Mizusawa and Members Whitfield to be members. The Parks and Rec Committee for Member Glenn to be chair and Member Vasquez to be a member. The Planning and Zoning Committee for Member Burgis to be committee chair and Members Whitfield and Arakaki to sit on that. The Restoration Advisory Board for Member Whitfield to be chair and, uh, I believe and that's all, just, just that for now. And the Education and Culture Committee, Member S three two, it will sit as committee chair with Members Vasquez and Anderson's members.
Okay, thank you, um, can, can someone make that motion for us? I can only entertain. Or I entertain the motion, someone has to make.
I just, yeah, I just summarized it, all of that's a good.
Okay, uh, can I get a second? Oh, uh, Board Member Burgis. Uh, Burgis.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I said Burgis.
Burgis.
Um, any discussion? All right, all in favor of the motion, uh, say aye. I'll oppose. Okay, so we'll be doing the, um, subsequent motion to, um, appoint, uh, Board Member Whitfield and Board Member Arakaki, um, one as chair.
Yeah.
Or we have to vote, right?
Yes, so, uh, I have two nominations for the committee chair, uh, the Red Hill Fuel Tanks Committee. Uh, Member Vasquez, uh, nominated, uh, Member Arakaki, and Member Whitfield, I'm dating her, so. And I can do a poll.
Okay.
So if you could just state the, uh, name of the member.
Oh, Board Member.
I see a little bit, ten seconds, do a, why I think I should be.
Yeah, uh, we'll get the opportunity to vote, yeah.
Okay, so, I've been a part of the petroleum industry for many years. Understand the industry and now as an office manager for a representative of my colleagues whose decision is never defected or fired from the legal appointment, I've seen a lot of the legislators, uh, committees. And so I give out a new foundation first, so I could invest right now to be chair of this committee to make sure this is a mission to the board.
Okay, thank you, uh, Board Member Whitfield.
I feel that I, I can feel. I know there's a lot of technical stuff going on with the Red Hill, but from a community standpoint as a Hawaiian, as a third generation Navy veteran and Navy of, of all things, of all branches, I connect with. I connect with the people and the frustrations with the military. I understand the people and the need to wala ba araina and I just have the heart to do to be of speak and we do not always speak, but to understand people and help bring first I'd like to bring these two people first in addition to writing the lines that have occurred to our people.
Thank you, or member Whitfield. We'll be doing the.
Okay, so the motion on the table is, or I'm sorry, the nominations are members Arakaki and member Whitfield for the Red Hill Fuel Tanks Committee Chair. Anderson? Arakaki? Burgis? Wire?
Whitfield?
Esperitu? Fitch? Glenn?
Arakaki?
Imura Udu? Mizusawa? Vasquez?
Arakaki.
Whitfield? Wood? So right now, you guys currently not have form on the vote with a vote of seven votes for member Arakaki and two, two noes for, or I'm sorry. Seven votes for member Arakaki, two votes for member Whitfield and two extensions. We can go to the second round of the public and and then now that people have heard, they mean their change. Okay, so we'll do a second round of votes on the same motion. Anderson? Arakaki? Burgis? Wire? Wire? Esperitu? Fitch? Glenn?
Arakaki?
Imura Udu? Mizusawa? Vasquez?
Arakaki.
Whitfield? Wood? Alright, the motion passes. Member Arakaki is the Red Hill Fuel Tanks Committee Chair.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, beginning with the core member Whitfield and the original motion, we need to do a motion to add her to this committee. But this pass vote, let's just say he left him as chair, great.
Yes, so my bad, I should have encompassed that, but I is, so we would just need a short motion to for members Whitfield, Esperitu and Burgis to become members.
Okay, can I entertain that motion? To add or members Spirit to Whitfield and Burgess as members of the committee? Okay, can I get a second? That's what I'm saying.
Sorry, who did the first?
Okay, discussion, all in favor, say aye. Thank you, everyone. We will be going down to board agenda item number seven, reorganizing the I A report first one. So a combination of at-large or sub-district seats. So I know that there was discussion about about looking at the makeup of the board when I'm great, so I think so just to give sort of the context, right now we have two vacancies in sub-district one, that's the end of I A. Sub-district four, there's one vacancy which is the Newtown area side where me and or member Tarn, so.
I think we should reorganize. Right, can we, is that what we're talking about now?
Oh, yes, Logan, can you clarify?
Yeah, absolutely. So just the way you guys' current board seedings are broken down, you guys have one at-large seat. You have four sub-district one seats with two vacancies, as you said. There are three sub-district two seats, which are all filled. There are four sub-district three seats, which are all filled. And there are three sub-district four seats with one vacancy, or yeah, one vacancy currently. And so at least the discussions that have come up from, that I've heard from multiple members are wanting to either reorganize it to some combination of I've heard like one sub-district seat for each of the four sub-districts and the remaining 11 seats at-large, I've heard two each sub-district seats. The NCO's recommendation is to either have all sub-districts or all at-large, but any combination of that, you guys can entertain a motion and then pass the motion. But at that point, once you guys have your feeling, it would then go before the Neighborhood Commission and then at that point, they would decide.
How can we do it next to like that?
Yeah, great question. So the Neighborhood Commission, they have their board meeting later this month. I believe it's the fourth Monday of the month. I can double check that, but yeah, but so if you guys were to pass the motion tonight,
Yes.
I could give it to the neighborhood assistant that sits on that board and then have that placed on the agenda, so that way
Okay.
As soon as it could go into effect before you guys.
And then we recess in August, so when we come back in September, we can vote.
Then it would, it would be in effect. If you guys vote on how you feel and then it goes before the commission and then they pass the changes, then it would be in effect going forward.
Okay, and then can we vote a person that comes in as an at-large and then vote for an officer, for the officer at picking waiting with that?
Yeah, that just depends on the distribution of how you guys make the motion, right?
Yeah, we do it. Let's do it.
Oh, that would be up to our, our board. I guess my, can I ask?
Yes.
How would that affect the frame? Because we do have more seats still, there are three vacancies.
Yes.
I mean, if we voted to add more at-large, right, but we vote to have more at-large than there are vacancies, right, then would in that affect like, like I have a sub-district break, but then what if, would that change mine?
Yeah, so that's the issue with changing the amount of sub-district seats. Like let's say you guys do one sub-district seat and then 11 at-large positions, then who fills those sub-district seats, right? So.
We can make, can we make tools at-large and like two at-large, maybe one where we needed?
Just to be clear, you can make any combination you want.
Okay.
And then if that's how you guys feel and you vote and pass it, then that can go before the commission. It's just how likely is it to get approved by them? I can't answer that.
Okay.
Yeah.
But who would determine like? Like it like her example, me, so right now I'm just contacting, I'm being a board member of Wire, represent sub-district four. There's vacancies, so there's two or three seats filled. And if one of the seats changes to an at-large, right, who determines? Or another election?
No, there, so the way I understand it is the way that you're describing a potential issue, I don't know how that would be. The commission would have to decide that and something like that is a potential hindrance, they're getting something approved, which is why the NCO, they recommend going either some combination of all at-large or some of all of the sub-districts, just because that's the cleanest change.
Okay.
So I'm, for disclosure, I am on the Neighborhood Board Commission, okay? So my recommendation would be that you have three vacant seats right now. You can make it so that you have those three vacant seats be at-large seats. So because all the rest of you are just elected, so you honor that election. You say you have three vacant seats, the people you have possibly you want to fill that position right now fall in those sub-districts. You want to change those three to three at-large seats. And then you vote on that and if you agree to that, then you present it to the Neighborhood Commission, which we meet on the fourth Monday of the month. Okay. And we go by, usually we have gone by the recommendation of the neighborhood board. Okay, so three of those vacant, at-large seats can go to any, any district. Is that what you're saying?
It's that at-large seat.
At-large seat.
Right.
Okay, and we'll take that.
Can I?
Yeah, there's one.
Okay.
That right now will be the way that the elections are going to be handled in the future, election two years from now.
It could be unless you decide to change that before the election back to however you want it.
Or can we make it so that this motion that we're going to put forward right now with those two seats is going to sunset at the end of the year?
You can, can.
Okay, because I was just going to make a point, right? I mean, this decision would, whether or not we choose to do it or not, right, it impacts the sub-districts in the future, right? So sub-district four would only have two persons, I believe, two and three have four each, right? So how is that fair to the sub-districts? They're just like.
But we're only doing it with this.
Okay. That's, that would be.
If that's how you guys want to work the motion, then that's, again, again, whatever you guys want to pass is within your rights to do so, it's just how it goes before the commission, if they see it being a real, like, realistic.
Yeah, okay.
Realistic.
Okay, okay.
But yeah, you guys have the opinion of one Neighborhood Commission member, so.
Okay, alright, so can I give ready motions on the board? I second board member Arakaki's.
I can make a motion that we make these three vacant seats at-large right now for this particular term and it will sunset at the end of the year.
On June 30, 2025. I second. Okay, or member Vasquez second, can we get any discussion?
I think that's a good idea.
Right now at this point, we have qualified members from our community who have sat and ran the boards for the year.
Yes.
And we are extremely qualified to come and handle the top, with this funding we had in the past couple of years.
This, this I A board is his board. Well, some yes, more is just their board, and we want to see them back on this.
Thank you for your discussion. Just to clarify, so we make the motion, but we have to wait to hear back from the NCO, right, for its, you know, because we're not moving.
No, absolutely. You guys should vote now. Yeah, any filling of vacancies would have to wait. Or then the commission's decision.
Okay.
Okay, we need it to.
Yeah, I can't guarantee it, but the fact that you guys pass your motion tonight, that gives you the best chance to make it on the agenda. I can't guarantee it, but I can.
I can provide updates to the board. Okay, any more discussion? Voice vote. Oh, sorry, board member Wire? Or Glenn?
Thank you. I, I understand the need to have the seats filled. But the reason why we have the geographic distribution is to try to get adequate representation for our particular neighborhood. I know we're not a big geographic region, but the way things are set up, we want to have the representatives come from each area so that each area has a say in goings-on in the community. So again, I see that people want to get these vacancies filled, but ruining the geographic distribution representation, I think would be a big mistake.
We want this board as long as I have. My sub-district one has always had vacancies, and that particular sub-district, some have been extremely hard to fill. One seat still that's open for a lot of times the entire term. So for us to right now be able to do this for this particular term, we follow my coach back on the board, I think is the best alternative.
Thank you. Uh, member Wire?
I kind of agree. The reason that there are sub-districts are to distribute the vote across, equally across the geographic area. Why do we have to have four sub-districts? Why don't we have three? We can expand a little bit on each side and still have a distribution, but the distribution wouldn't be 25%, it'd be 33%. And we, if we wind up with too many at-large, we have the possibility that a couple of the high-rises can get together and they can put all their people in and just completely dominate the board with their issues through the exclusion of everybody else. I'd like to see us look at maybe go to three sub-districts and then we can distribute the power, responsibility a little bit differently and maybe cover sub-districts one has always been a problem, and sub-district four, eh, not totally, but we've had problems here too. I'd like to see if anybody kind of agrees with that, or if they don't, we move on.
Okay, or member Arak.
I kind of agree with that, but I mean, that's something that we can discuss over the next two years to get that problem solved on a larger scale. We're just trying to fill these three vacancies very much. This is just trying to get us through right now.
Yeah, I just want to say something in regards to, I think that it's interesting how you guys are trying to fill it towards the end of the term, because something that's really important is, you know, having ample representation to the community. But one thing is, if you guys are having these recurring vacancies, you know, that should, that should show you enough to, where if you have interest in people, then, you know, change could happen at some point, whether it's a remapping of the district boundaries or it's a switch to like you guys are trying to make, so.
I have one question. So if we wanted to re re-portion where we may have like maybe two or three sub-districts, that's a potential for us to then see on?
Yeah, so that would just be something to consider on a, not at this time.
Yeah.
You guys have a motion on the table and this is something that, you know, if you guys feel is a serious enough issue, how you guys have this with the sunset on it, then it can come up at a later date. But it's definitely something that I think could.
Yeah, so I think, I think in print from that, right, if we wanted to change it so that there are less sub-districts with a wider range, we probably would have to work separately to propose the lines, but we can't do that tonight, right?
Yes.
Doesn't mean we, we would wait another two years, right, but if that would take a little bit of time. Possibly, yes, yeah.
Or I mean, you guys even have a planning and zoning?
Yeah.
Agenda number one.
Okay, well, so. We'll go back to the current motion, right? So just knowing all of that, hold on, the motion to take the three vacant seats and shoot them out. Any more discussion?
It's just yours to your turn.
It's just, it's that said at the end of this current 2023 to 2025. Okay, we'll do a roll call vote. Okay.
Okay, so the current motion on the table by member Arakaki and seconded by a member Vasquez is to change the current three vacancies, the two in sub-district one and the one in sub-district four to at-large vacancies for the remainder of the board term until the end of 2020, or the 2025 middle.
So that means if we talk to the year.
Yes. If the NCO accepts the change.
Anderson? Arakaki? Arakaki? Burgis?
Aye.
Burgis?
Aye.
Aye.
Esperitu? Fitch? Glenn?
No.
Imura Udu?
Aye.
Mizusawa?
Aye.
Vasquez?
Aye.
Whitfield? Wood? Okay, the motion passes with the vote of nine ayes, one no and one extension.
Okay, thank you. So moving down to number eight, approval of regular meetings, so if everyone can please look at the minutes from last month. I want to entertain a motion to accept the minutes and then during discussion, you guys can take a change.
I'd like to vote.
I'd like to vote.
Oh.
Okay.
Uh, Vasquez? Uh, Vasquez?
I have a question on that.
Uh, yes. Board member. Yes.
The motion that was made to draft a rev- resolution opposing the proposed salary raises for the, it's on page three, up ne- up near the top. Uh, it says, it reads the motion and it says there were seven ayes and five nays and no abstentions. Why didn't the motion pass? There was seven in favor and five opposed. And the motion was to oppose the pay raise.
Yeah, so, um, yeah, so, um, board member. Motion, voting, you wanna?
What, what, what?
A page three, the motion.
Page three, the motion.
Old salary, old salary. Um, I believe eight is. Pass and pass. Um, and there were seven ayes.
Seven ayes. Why didn't it pass?
Uh, because eight is the forum.
But it's a motion, shouldn't it just be a simple majority?
Uh, okay.
No, you need a, um, you need a.
No?
Yeah, you, you need to, yeah, you need, you need a quorum. Yeah, motion to, yeah, motion to for the rest.
Okay, that answers my question then. If, if you needed quorum, then it didn't pass.
Okay. Thank you, board members wire. Um, does anyone have any other? That's good. Yes, Chris. Okay. Um, he will be voting now, um, all in favor of approving the minutes, say aye.
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 All votes. It mostly carries. All right, we'll be moving down to, um, monthly reports. Um, sorry, Board of Water Supply, Tracy Virgo.
Good evening, Vice Chair, Mrs. Dalla, members of the IA neighborhood board. Sorry. Oh, sorry?
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, if, if you, um, if you're coming up to speak, if you can kinda speak towards that little malice.
Good evening, Vice Chair, Mrs. Dalla, members of the IA Neighborhood Board, members of the community. I'm Tracy Virgo. Um, I'm with the Board of Water Supply and I'm going to, in interest of time, forego my monthly report uh, to allow, um, our deputy manager, Erwin Pawata, to do a presentation on the PFOS chemical. Because there seems to be a, uh, large interest in that subject, so, thank you.
Uh, thank you, Tracy. Thank you, board members. Um, I'm gonna share my screen. I have a short presentation that I'm going to, um, show. Okay. Can everyone see that? Can everyone see that screen?
Yes, we can see it.
Good, thank you very much. So, thank you again. Um, I'm gonna talk a little bit about our detections, though. We've detected some, uh, this PFOS, so it stands for per and polyfluoroalkyl substances at, uh, some of our different wells. Okay. Um, and then I'm gonna talk a little bit about, um, some Department of Defense, um, investigations that are undergoing at their facilities and, uh, what PFOS, uh, really is, and then, uh, our next steps. So this table here shows, uh, the results of, uh, some of our wells and the different kinds of PFOS chemicals detected. I'm also showing here what the levels are. They are between two to three parts per trillion, which is very close to the minimum, minimum, uh, reporting limit. And then how they compare to current thresholds that are either being proposed by EPA or currently exist with Department of Health. All of the values here are within the, these particular thresholds that are currently being proposed or exist right now. As you can see through here, though, these, um, the types of PFOS vary at each of the different lo- location, as well as the number of different kinds of PFOS chemicals. This one also shows our halava wells, our wells in Ka' Milo, and most recently, we discovered, uh, some very low levels of PFOS at our Pearl City Shaft. Again, here, you can see that some of them have a number of different types and others, uh, very few. All of the values here on this table also show them to be well within the different thresholds that are either currently being proposed or exist with Department of Health and EPA. So in terms of location, um, there we have our halava wells and our Moana Lua. These are one of our five wells closest to the Red Hill Bulk Fuel Storage Facility. Uh, we've been monitoring these two wells since twenty fourteen for petroleum contamination and most recently, uh, for PFOS, uh, presence. This one too, this is, uh, this map shows the location of our, our Moana Lua wells, also in close proximity to Tripler Army Medical Center and Fort Shafter. These are two different DOD, uh, facilities that are also undergoing their own, uh, investigations on their site. This one here is our Wapio Heights Wells, uh, located in the Gentry area. They're very close to, um, a Hawaii Army National Guard Training Facility that's also undergoing a PFOS investigation at their site. We have our Pearl City Shaft, there's, which is in close proximity. We have other wells, our Pearl City Wells, Manana Well, and even the Navy has its Waiala Shaft around little less than a mile away from this, uh, Army, uh, National Guard location. All of these, uh, this map here shows, um, the island, um, shows where.
We have three minutes.
Okay.
Uh.
Okay, I'll just finish up real quick. Shows that where they are in location to our drinking water aquifer. Many of them are over in the Cap Rock area, which is a non-drinking water area, um, shown in pink. Uh, PFOS chemicals, there are a lot, large number of different types. They were actually manufactured to make a number of consumer products resistant to water heat and stain. They're very water soluble and they've also shown to have some, uh, adverse health effects at low level concentrations. Right now, EPA is looking at proposing some standards for PFOS. Um, it's going to be finalized expected by the end of the year. In the meantime, there are some regulatory requirements to conduct monitoring that we're gonna continue, uh, into the future. And with that, happy to take any questions that you might have.
Thank you so much for your, um, parting on that. Uh, board members, any questions?
Is, uh, presentation being available?
Uh, is this available anywhere?
Yeah, we can send it to be.
Okay. Thank you.
I have it in the, uh, Google Drive as well.
Okay. Okay. Uh, board members, any other questions? Community? Uh, there.
I know you are monitoring the wells, but so this chemical, does it, um, do you think it could leach in from other places besides the military sites?
Well, PFOS is, yeah, PFOS is in a number of different products. You know, you find them in, um, products that can help to resist heat, uh, uh, water staining, uh, things like, um, uh, non-stick cookware, um, that were very commonly used for making those kinds of products ever since the nineteen sixties and seventies. Things like, um, uh, pizza boxes, things that help to hold heat. Uh, so this product has, this chemical has been used for a number of years, a long time, and it's in the environment. Uh, EP has discovered it in soil, in surface water, uh, even in wildlife. They've found very low levels of, uh, PFOS, uh, that are in all of these different areas. So, um, right now, we're just doing a lot of monitoring and keeping an eye on these levels. And the important thing is to make sure that, uh, we don't see any increases. And if so, you know, then we have to consider, uh, things like treatment to try to control the levels that are present.
Thank you. Um, can you say your name?
Larry. You know, as far as filtering it out, is there any filter that can take out that PFOS that is over the top?
No, not right now. Um, there is, uh, regulatory, proposed regulatory treatment options that are being considered, things like activated carbon or granular activated carbon, another type of treatment called ion exchange. These are industrial scale types of treatment systems. Currently, um, as far as, um, what's commercially available, uh, there are some companies that claim it can be, uh, used to remove PFOS in water. The best thing to do is either check the EPA website or, um, uh, something called the National Sanitation Foundation for those products that are listed that are effective.
Yes.
As far as, uh, the concentration, does it build up in your body over time?
It, um, has been known to do that. Uh, it can bioaccumulate, uh, within the body. It's all dependent on, uh, the type of PFOS and amount of exposure. Uh, most of the analysis, uh, that EPA has done so far, uh, really don't show, uh, large amounts of, uh, bioaccumulation. Most of it, it is, it is something that is water soluble, so it can, has, it can pass through the body as well as bioaccumulate. And that's what makes PFOS a concern because it is water soluble. Anything on the soil can eventually percolate to our groundwater aquifers. And so that's where our major area of concern is.
So if we stop drinking water with that PFOS, does it get flushed out of our system?
It can potentially get flushed because it is, uh, water soluble.
Any other community? Okay. Uh, thank you so much, uh, Tracy. Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Oh, yes.
I have a question, but it was, it wasn't pertaining to PFOS. I see an article that Border Water Supply is gonna put up another reservoir for forty-three million, if I recall that in the article. And that was due to the fact that they couldn't rely on the Red Hill, uh, wells, so they're gonna put up another reservoir.
Erwin, do you want me to answer that?
Sure.
Yeah.
This is a project that was actually on the books for several years prior to the Red Hill. We are, I have a deficit of fifty-five million gallons in Meson, Honolulu. And so this will provide eight more million gallons or fifteen percent of that deficit. So this was a project, wasn't due to Red Hill at all. This was a project that was on the books for a while. Because of Red Hill, it does help offset some of that.
Can we ask words, we'll take them?
Waiala.
The other question, since it's become more of a critical project, can we get federal monies to help out because because of the Red Hill situation, now the taxpayer uses water supply. They're carrying more of that burden. Does anyone get federal monies to help out build that reservoir?
We've actually applied for every bit of federal money that we can and we're applying for more of it. We've also talked to our professional delegation and asked there for their help. They have indicated their support. Uh, we've also, uh, sent a letter to the Secretary of the Navy asking for reimbursement for all of our costs. Getting federal money, though, it's a long-term, uh, commitment. We're committed to staying in there, in that game and we're not going anywhere. But we have currently applied for all federal funding that we can. Erwin, I don't know if this project's taking federal funding, but we are using federal funding for the projects.
Yeah, we are gonna be exploring for every project that is eligible. We will be applying for federal funding.
Okay. Uh, board member.
So I know that the clinics that are only open to, um, military personnel, they had now changed that stance about, but it was a serious, but also it's definitely a wide source, not too, so. Can you just carry me on that federal, no? It just gets honest.
Thank you. Also, I think that demand for bottled water, you know, like Costco, this sounded hard, but everybody's carrying out bottled water. It's the local people too. Where Hawaii is supposed to have clean water, but when I hear this, you know, thinking, well, maybe I should lie to them. I can tell you, I drink bottled water.
Yeah, me, I do. Quite quick written.
Did you check the chat?
Also, those communities out there in Honolulu, like, well, we cherish the area. A vast majority of residents in the area, including the lodges, responsible bottled water.
Yeah, I know.
They, they're still very concerned about.
But there's less concern on the baby system.
Right.
Yeah, one, one, one thing we wanna be, kinda keep in mind, water is, uh, in our environment and like everything, it gets exposed to what is in, in our environment. So managing our environment and managing all of our waste is incredibly important to the future because if we don't, then we don't manage our practices in the environment. That can ultimately have an effect on those things that are part of that environment, including our water, our soils and all the other things that's in our environment.
Yes. Okay, one more question.
Bottle water does not have PFOS. Is that being tested also?
Bottled water is also tested. It is currently treated as a food product. It does have its own standards. Um, and, um, it is similar to the drinking water standards that, um, we currently have to, uh, make sure that we comply with.
But it may have PFOS in bottled water.
Well, the bottled water process is, uh, usually done by reverse osmosis, which is effective in removing PFOS. So to our knowledge, um, bottled water, uh, doesn't contain any kind of PFOS in it. But the best thing to do is to contact, uh, you know, a bottled water company, ask them for a test result for PFOS to be absolutely sure.
Okay. Um, if nothing else, well, thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, we'll move down to Honolulu Transit, Johnny Reed, and, and sorry, just wanna make a friendly reminder, uh, three minute, uh, time limit for the table set. And, uh, we can also have you add your questions.
So there's projector, I'm gonna go up to the front.
Uh, or you can sit right there. That's the mic.
Um, ever, and, uh, board members, members of the audience, Johnny Reed from Heart's, uh, Construction Engineering Inspection Team. I do, uh, public development and community relations for Heart. Um, just some quick updates, as you guys know, hopefully, um, June thirtieth, segment one, open to the public from East Coupley to the Low Stadium. Uh, Heart is a city agency tasked with the construction of the rail system. Uh, City Department of Transportation Services then manages the operations and maintenance, the day-to-day activities, along with the bus. Uh, if you have any questions for Heart or the project or the construction elements of it, uh, we have a project website, honolulutransit.org, O R G. We have a twenty-four hour project hotline, five six six two two nine nine. There's also, uh, information, uh, email. If you have a question you'd like to write to us, it's I N F O, uh, info@honolulutransit.org. If you have any questions with the day-to-day operations, whether it be riding the trains, the schedules and so forth, uh, that does fall under Department of Transportation Services with the city. Um, they also have their outlets, uh, for rail operations, rider fares, integration of the bus and the skyline. Um, there is a, a website, honolulu.gov/skyline. They have another information line, eight oh eight eight four eight five 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 five. And they also have an email, skyline@honolulu.gov. So just wanna make sure that Heart, um, you guys know it's the construction agency, DTS does operations and maintenance, day-to-day operations. So now I'll make sure that's, um, kinda well-known. I don't have the, um, construction updates, um, other than, uh, the Koloaloo Stream. Uh, this was shared at the Pearl City Neighborhood Board, but it's, um, actually in the IA Neighborhood Board District. You guys may see yellow barrels by Polymomi, um, on Commandment Highway by the Koloaloo Stream Bridge. Uh, there is a guardrail system being designed. It's still, um, under review. It's moving through the process with DOT, um, that guardrail system will be installed. So if you ever wonder why the yellow barrels are on Commandment Highway at Polymomi, uh, those are just crash attenuators, um, that will be in place until the guardrail system is up. So, um, that's all I have, um, here for any questions. I hope that was under three minutes.
Okay. Board member.
What's, I noticed outside of our district, but what is the timeframe for the good moving down there?
So Dillingham utility relocation is underway. That Dillingham contract is gonna go through early, early twenty twenty-six. Um, that utility relocation is paving the way for the guideway and stations and the columns as, as coming up. That contract should be, uh, going out for, um, bids later this year. So just the utility relocation is gonna go through early twenty twenty-six, but hot on that tail will be the guideway and the columns and the station contractor that's gonna go out for bid, um, shortly.
Okay. Uh, board member.
Hi. So I did ride the rail. Amazing, by the way. I did want to know, like, um, why do we need to use our cola cart to get out of the station?
Ooh, I, I, I know a lot about cola cart and DTS and Heart. I don't know that part, but that's just a mechanism to show that you've exited the station, I imagine. I would have to defer to DTS. I could follow up on that with their, with their team and, uh, provide a response that is hundred percent accurate. My understanding is just to, you have, tap to get in so they know you're riding system. You tap to get out to show that you exited the station. Oh, that's.
For security. Eight forty-seven for that. It's good for one year.
Senior says.
Uh, any other questions from the board? Um, community, thanks.
Yeah. Um, so Johnny, I know you, I'm gonna hear you again, but is, I know you folks are part of the construction part. And so the part that's already established from Low Stadium to, uh, Middle Street, that's the next lane, right?
Correct.
So pretty much that's finished construction and now we're gonna start with testing, but it's not gonna open until twenty twenty six.
Twenty twenty-five.
Twenty twenty-five.
So, oh, sorry, but you're correct, the, the physical. So, but you're correct, the, the physical construction of the guideway columns are complete. The stations are still like their high ninety percent completion percentage. Hitachi has all the tracks in, but Hitachi then needs to do their traction electrification system, their, their traction power substations or cabling. You see at the Pearl Station, you see like the, the conduits that go up or the raceway columns, that all needs to happen. So STG is nearing their completion, but Hitachi will then do theirs. And that's another about a two-year process. So twenty twenty-five is the projected timeline for expansion back past Low Stadium to Middle Street.
Okay, so, so my question is, is there a possibility that we can at least get the section up to the airport open? Because that seems to be the one big thing, you know, like especially since the stadium's not doing very much these days, you know? If you can get it to the airport, that's a destination.
Well, I think that question has been asked with even the mayor. I think he went to our CEO. But they're actually, they're being tested in a series. So all of them kind of get tested in one batch. So Makalapa Harbor, through the airport, through drive and then Middle Street. It's likely that they will open in one, one, yeah.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, thank you, Johnny. Oh, yes.
I don't, I don't think it's in your area, but as far as the financial side, where is the break-even point as far as ridership on Hart? It's actually staying for itself. Is it five thousand riders a day, ten thousand?
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure. That would be definitely a DTS question. I'm not sure if the mayor's able to answer that, but if not, I can take the question back and hopefully get an answer for you for the next meeting. I, I don't know that.
I'm just curious where we are because we got three thousand riders, but we need say fifteen thousand to break even. Somebody, the taxpayer is paying for that twelve thousand empty seats that they're not breaking even on.
Yeah, I don't know that. And, but, yeah, I would have to get back. I don't know that breakdown. But transit systems.
They're never going to break even.
Well, like we're maybe three dollars per rider. Just assuming that much rider.
When I being a traffic engineer, I would say that transit systems are essentially a public service. It's not meant to operate as a profit business. It's meant to be a, a bus service. So the buses, the railways, it's meant to be a feasible option for residents. But the number you're getting at, they might be out there. I wouldn't have, I can check for their DTS counterparts and see if they might have info, but at minimum, it would have to be in the next meeting we have. I don't have anything on that.
Yeah, if you could try to come up with the next meeting.
Just curious.
I, I wonder how the people will get to the train station. They have handy van, the buses to pick them up. I see parking lot, you know, I kissed it, did one smile, I was thinking I saw that. But let's hopefully get down to the rail, to the area, to the city, like, you know.
Well, the rail is, the rail is an extension of the bus line. So a lot of the kind of visualization we tried to depict in years past was wheels. But we also spoke to the center hub or B's to a B hat. So there are, there are buses that feed different communities that will drop passengers off at the rail stations. DTS has made a couple of presentations over the years to show how the routes feed the communities and unload at the Pearl Station.
Is part of that too, because they gave you a handy van for holo card.
Yeah.
Yes, I have yet to use it.
Yeah.
And then I checked out the bathrooms. It's free to go. Oh, yeah, then you go right in and it's clean and safe. It's okay.
All right, thank you. Thank you. All right, moving down to stadium on the ready. Can you bump out?
Aloha, Vice Chair, members of the board and members of the community. We're very excited to follow up on what we started. Last month, announcing that we're moving forward on our procurement for both the stadium and the initial part of district development. We kicked it off last month with market sounding, and that's when we go out to the industry to make sure that we are in the right lanes, getting all of the right information together to have a competitive and fair procurement process. We actually had a hundred and sixty-five attendees that covered expertise ranging from the financial areas, development, construction, operation, maintenance, investment, and even key consultants. So what we're doing now is evaluating all of their inputs. We're going to be talking to some of them to make sure that our first steps are good ones. And what we're looking forward to is issuing the first phase of the request for proposal process, which is called Request Your Qualifications before the end of this year. And then we would anticipate issuing part two, which is request for the actual proposals this time next year. And then by mid-two thousand twenty-five, we hope to be entering into a contract with the target completion date for the stadium in time for the two thousand twenty-eight U H football season. And what I'll do very quickly is just share my screen to show that we did issue our newsletter this past month. There we go. If you are not getting it by email blast, you can go to our website, mesa.hawaii.gov. And this is our June twenty-six newsletter. Our next newsletter is coming out at the end of July. And in the interest of saving time, I will pass my baton over to Samson Samantha Spain, so she can give you an update on what's going on.
Thanks, Chris. Good evening, Vice Chair, Board and Community Members. Glad to be here. Just a quick recap. So as Johnny mentioned, we did have our grand opening on July first with DTS. So what the stadium did as part of the partnership is we passed out two thousand holo cards that weekend as well as we did a giveaway. So if you showed your holo card, you were able to get vendor discount specials throughout the weekend. And then we also distributed twelve hundred reusable shopping bags that we had custom made in partnership with Autumn Corporation. So we had a really good turnout, the swap meet, definitely saw new customers, which we were really happy about. And then we again saw a lot of our returning customers that rode the rail. So we had a lot of great feedback and comments. So we are excited to continue our partnership with DTS. In addition to that, this past Sunday was the last day for the fiftieth state fair. They were extremely busy the last day. The word got out that it was two dollar rides all day. So that kind of wrapped up for the whole past two months with that. And then other than that, our only announcement coming up for July twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth will be our birthday bash thirty-three that we are doing with T M R events. And that's going to be held in our Upper Halava Lot, similar to the event that we did back in February. It is with the same promoter. So we are able to continue to lay out the monitoring of the sound as well as attendance that we are expecting. Other than that, I can answer any questions you may have.
This is the TC chain on the university. It has expanded where it's, you know, going up there. I think that's good because it's near the campus and open to Honolulu district. We do not like, you know, going way out. At least the, the stadium, how that make it easier? I know you can have, it's going to be way bigger than the TC chain, you know, they can have concerts, like, you know, the people that all the stars. Would that cause people like, the people that usually come for big concerts and they extend Friday, Saturday, Sunday? But anyway, it would actually be the venue for those big conferences. Where would they happen, big concerts?
Yes, so what's happening is the stadium is actually being downsized from fifty thousand seats to a minimum of twenty-five thousand seats. And that we found now is a much more competitive size, but yes, that's what would be the large venue for concerts coming to Hawaii and, and the larger events. And that is something that we've worked with the industry and found that that's a good number because they'd rather see a stadium that's filled, especially when they're broadcasting than a fifty thousand seat stadium that's half empty.
The TC chain will still be for football, right? Because it's regular.
Stadium is completed, then the football will be shifting to a low stadium because they do still need the minimum capacity to stay in NCAA. So we're working very closely with the University of Hawaii to make sure they can maintain their NCAA status with the promise that the stadium would be completed by twenty twenty-eight.
Okay, thank you. Our members, any other, uh, community?
Distincting out the box, were other sites considered for the stadium? For instance, West Oahu campus are helping out our Hawaiians and moving up by war when we have that land. Because if you play out West Oahu, you know, our current stadium has six thousand parking stalls. It's not being used during the week. And when I looked at another article, they said the bottleneck at Injun Beach to merge has roughly fifty thousand cars a day. And so I mentioned, if you could take ten percent of the cars off the road in that bottleneck, would not be as bad. So all the people from the west side possibly could park at that West Oahu campus. If there's a stadium with that open lot and jump on art, the rail to come into town, are others considered?
Yes, absolutely. And in fact, we encourage you to check out our mesa.hawaii.gov website because our site selection is posted there. We started with a clean slate. We didn't have any bias on where we wanted to put the stadium and we evaluated all of the opportunities and the challenges. And yes, West Oahu was considered along with, you know, Kalailo, U H, even Magic Island, Sand Island, Kapialani Park, just large areas. And it still came out that Halava was the best site because of the access from all the different areas of the island as well as the space that we have available. I think one of the challenges, you know, that we saw with West Oahu is access to the area and the lack of infrastructure for the stadium. Now with the stadium and Halava site, we're looking at converting all of the open parking into usable space with structured parking, but also bringing in other community assets that can be shared. And certainly our conceptual master plan did show how building up the grid streets and doing the traffic patterns correctly to separate, for example, all the multimodal transportation from each other. So you don't have pedestrians, you know, competing with bicyclists, competing with the actual traffic or the cars and automobiles. We're looking at ways to get cars off of the main arterial roads surrounding the stadium and into the property. And then from there, they can feed into the parking structures. So we have been looking at exactly that, you know, the traffic patterns and the challenges, but also building up benefits for the community.
I went to New York, I went to the baseball stadium, the New York Mets stadium. It's right on the real line.
Yeah.
Within half an hour, all of that crowd has been watching baseball teams get out via rail. And couldn't we do the same thing here and utilize our rail to access the stadium? They could get ten, twenty thousand plus persons jumping on the rail, coming back into town. And you're going to need to cap all that car traffic going out to West Oahu.
Yeah, definitely. And that's one of the symbiotic benefits that we're looking at working with DTS. We're even looking at how they schedule their rail, you know, the cars, the trains and their frequency when we have events so that we can handle the big loads when people are arriving and dispatching. And then on top of that, making the district more attractive. So people come early and stay late. So, um, yeah, we're working very closely with the county on trying to bring as much benefit as possible, exactly as you're saying.
The other thing was, you look at that slightly more, we have the Hawaiian land. Hawaiian, Hawaiian people could get perpetual money by leasing that land and put the stadium on there. And then getting that area, which is very popular now as an entertainment district, it's already an entertainment district. You could possibly use rail to get into that area also.
Yes. And I think our Q O D group, you know, there's a, there's a consortium of state, federal and county entities, along with private developers that are looking at transit oriented development along the entire rail, exactly for that kind of activation for all of the communities along the whole area. If y'all would like, I can go ahead and share the link to the work that they do. And, you know, communities welcome to participate in that as well.
The final one is, if we made Halava strictly as housing, and we put a transportation hub at Halava, because it's a central part of the island, probably could put a lot more housing in Halava and do it up as infrastructure could accommodate it. Because as of now, I don't believe the infrastructure can accommodate
That's right.
a lot of housing on that Halava property site. But I'm just wondering if we can throw one stone and knock three birds off by putting the stadium in a strategic location. We have parking access at a remote end and you can get access to the rail. Put it on the other end closer to town, we could get the rail going there. We don't need a lot of parking because nobody goes there. We can give the Hawaiian people perpetual money by leasing that land, but the stadium.
You have a lot of great ideas and we'd love to go ahead and digest them with you offline a little bit more. But, um, yeah, we are looking at development, as you're saying, just not stuck on one site, but complementary to all of the communities along rail. And how do you balance that, you know, with housing? Uh, we have had studies that we've shared at this meeting in the past on what happens if you just plunk down ten, twenty or a hundred thousand affordable housing units in one location. That actually doesn't help revitalize the community or the economy. However, spreading it out all along rail and helping all the communities along the way helps revitalize everyone. So it's what you're saying. You, you look at target of benefits for each community, build it up. And then people can use rail to move back and forth to look at the key assets through the area and really help build the community for people who would work for it. But, yeah, we can talk story more if you'd like.
Thank you. Sorry, we have to move on. We have less than an hour left. Um, we'll be moving down to all triple C, Bettina. Thank you, Chris.
All right, thank you. Good evening, Vice Chair, members of the board, members of the community. I am Bettina Maynard from A H L, the lead of the O triple C design team. And I'm going to attempt to share something with you. Can you see this?
Yes.
Yes.
Hey, perfect. I apologize, I have to do that. For the technical difficulties in our last meeting, it was indeed my relatively new computer dying. And I am joining you today from a brand new machine. Update today on O triple C. Two parts. Number one, our newsletter. The newsletter, volume forty-nine, has been issued. And it focuses on some media attention. Leading off is an editorial from the Star Advertisers Board on why there is no good reason to delay the new jail. Uh, this article also reminded readers that a delay on the planning will have unintended negative consequences. And that we collectively need to emphasize restoration and rehabilitation in the criminal justice system, which can happen at the same time as the design advances. There's also some reference on a front page article by Andrew Gomes on the funding holdup of this project. And other topics include an article on what is restorative justice. We listed the bills that made it through this year's legislative process that aim to improve the justice system. And we finish up graphically with photographs on the ongoing construction of the W triple C in Kailua. You see here some of the star advertiser articles that I just referenced. It is always nice to see others comment on a project that we really feel quite passionate about. The other part that I want to mention today is inmate safety. You have all heard the sad news about the the inmate that was found dead at the jail and what may have led to it. I'm not going to read this slide to you here. You can probably do this much faster and better on your own. Yes.
And can you wrap up, please? I apologize.
Oh, my goodness, I will. Okay, well, this is a good time to point out why a new jail is important. There are three main focuses. One is housing design efficiencies. They're designed to support stuff, staff efficiencies. And then general, um, general aspects that the new design supports. And I do want to highlight a couple of those. Direct supervision, um, more normative living environments. You can read some of those here. And we should not forget that all of those here will make our jail safer and, um, not only for our inmates, but for our staff as well. Okay, I'm wrapping this up.
Thank you.
Are there any questions?
Or members, any questions?
No.
Now to community, any questions? No. Okay, thank you. Uh, moving down to Corey Park Center, David Chennelli, are you present?
He isn't, so we'll give you the three minutes.
Oh.
No, no update.
We appreciate that.
Thank you.
Um, moving down to US Navy Department of Defense, Victor Flynn, are you on them? Or someone from?
Then, um, let's keep my level of confidence.
Okay.
Um, yeah, I do see a Lydia online. I know that Victor is in Y and I say.
Oh, okay.
Lydia, are you there?
Okay, um, we will be moving down.
Lydia, you're, uh, you're on mute, Lydia. Lydia, you're still, uh, muted. Lydia, if you're talking, we can hear you. You're muted.
Oh, I see. Okay, uh, Lydia, I'm sorry if you can hear me. Uh, we can't hear you. So we're going to just move down to the next, I think, back to you. Um, moving on to the next item, Environmental Protection Agency, Dominique Smith. Are you online?
Okay, that's fast, many minutes.
Um, who on do you see Dominique Smith? Okay. Um, we'll be down to State Department of Transportation, Highways Division. Um, he's the obvious.
Uh, what do you mean, Chair? Um, Casey, I'll be here.
Can y'all hear me?
Department of Transportation, Highways Division. Um, I will be your new representative to our neighborhood board, board of Department of Transportation. And let me share my screen here with you folks. Okay.
Can y'all hear me now?
Oh, I'm sorry. Um, get back to your report after. We apologize. We had some.
Can you guys see the screen here? Yeah. Okay, I guess, um, I got a call, um, email from, uh, Ms. Karen Calmoro from Representative Greg Takayama's office back in late June, uh, expressing the concern by your board chair, um, word about there's no U-turns along Kamia Mia Highway, uh, where you're traveling, initially traveling westbound, but then you want to make a U-turn and go back eastbound. Um, especially, um, between Kahumanu Street intersection and Lehuwa Avenue and Waimana Home Road, which is about a one point one, two mile distance where there's no U-turns. Uh, we're currently looking at, um, areas within this one point one, two mile location. And we're, there's, there's six areas, but three of them may be a possibility. The first one here is, um, at Kaluamoi Drive intersection, which is about a one, one tenth mile from the Kahumanu Avenue Street. Next one here is the, um, Hiko Power Plant entrance, which is about a half a mile from the Kahumanu Street intersection. Um, this is one where, uh, the Pro City Neighborhood Board, um, wanted to get a U-turn, but it's currently, um, has been denied. But we are trying to look at it again. And then the third location here is at the entrance of Halemo Halu, which is about nine tenths of a mile from the, um, Kahumanu Street intersection. Okay, so for the first here, this first intersection, uh, Kaluamoi Drive intersection, the first is one, uh, point ten miles away from Kahumanu. Um, it does have a exclusive left turn, um, lane. And from the other side, it's a very short, um, area where we'll probably have to limit it to, um, passenger vehicles and small trucks. Big trucks like your full-size trucks may not have enough turning radius, uh, to meet this area. So, but this is one location we're looking at. This other section here, um, was brought up, but we, as you can see now, it has a new raised crosswalk at Kulianna Street. If there's no U-turn, uh, we would not recommend putting a U-turn here only because there's no exclusive left turn lane here. Uh, it would cause traffic congestion and a lot of rear-end accidents. Next is the, as I mentioned previously, exclusive left turn lane at the Hiko Power Plant. This is the second location. Currently it has been denied, but we are reconsidering it. We're looking at it closely. As you can see, it's no left turn here. It goes into the entrance of the Hiko Power Plant. And again, it has a slightly same amount of width of distance for the U-turn. But again, probably we have to limit it to, uh, passenger cars and small trucks and no large vehicles. This next intersection here, Pooh Pointy Street and T intersection, there's no U-turn. Again, there's no exclusive left turn lane here. So we would not recommend putting a U-turn here. Again, you know, there's a raised meeting island here where we would, we have to remove if we do consider putting a U-turn. Next, um, is our third, uh, location that we're looking to.
Really quickly, thank you.
This is the, um, at entrance to Halemo Halu, number two. This is, um, again, it has a exclusive left turn lane. Again, currently it's no U-turn. And again, this is the same way. So probably limited to us vehicles and, um, small trucks. As you can see, it's a very popular place for people to jaywalk, especially people living on the left side by the Kali Halemo Halu where they walk across, um, to zip from zippies. But we don't encourage jaywalking. And as you can see here, this is, I was fortunate when I went out to do a field investigation. There was a car, a small car Toyota Prius. And just so happens, he was making an illegal, illegal U-turn, but he made it. So we're working with, um, our traffic engineers to see if it's possible to allow small cars, but we'll have to get back to you folks, um, at the next meeting because we're still doing our field investigation because we are concerned about litigations and future lawsuits against the state if something happens. And again, this is the last intersection here where, um, Pooh, Pooh Mory Street and T intersection, there's no U-turn. We don't recommend U-turn here because they don't have a designated left turn.
Sorry, sorry, we have to wrap up.
That's it.
Okay. Oh, thank you. I apologize. Thank you. Any court members, any questions? Community, yes, there.
Isn't it a liability issue if making a U-turn, but you can visibly see your incoming traffic? There's a lot of those calls are huge. They have stopped at you when they're trying to do a U-turn. Actually, who are they sued when they're an accident? It's the state or city.
Uh, just to add to that briefly.
And that's that, you're correct. That's why we have to do a thorough investigation because if there's not enough sight distance, um, and an accident occur, we do can, we, we can get sued. That's, that's, that's a challenging part we have right now. But as you can see here, um, people do make the illegal U-turns. But again, we're just trying to address, um, Chair Ward's request to the investigation on seeing if we can provide U-turns for, um, vehicles, because right now there's no U-turn available.
Okay.
If you allow the U-turn, you should drop the speed before the U-turn.
Yeah, that's another option too. We can drop the speed. But again, you know, um, it's a matter of driver's judgment when they make the U-turn. They have enough, um, time to make the U-turn where vehicles, um, approaching them forward, um, you know, do anything careless where they do get into an accident.
Oh, thank you. Okay.
Uh, yeah, before we move on, uh, could you, uh, stop sharing your screen?
Say it again, okay?
Could you, uh, stop sharing your screen, please?
Oh, stop sharing. Okay, sure.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm sorry, we will be moving. Um, thank you so much. Um, being back to, uh, US Navy Department of Defense.
Hi, this is Lydia. Can you all hear me now?
Yes, and sorry, we do have a three-minute time limit, so.
Yes, absolutely. I'll, I'll go with the first item that's the most important. As far as the EPA consent order, there is a community representation initiative that in the first meeting will be on July twenty-seventh from five to seven at Ali Amano Middle School. And we encourage the public to be there. The EPA will be looking at how to, um, help the public decide how to vote in the 10 members that they want. I'll put more information in the chat. The other quick items are that closure and defueling work are continuing. We're working with DOH and EPA on those issues. Both the Joint Task Force and the Navy websites have info on our initiatives. Um, the potential non-fuel beneficial reuse surveys are continuing and we will share information. If you have any questions, please let me know. Long-term monitoring continues and the water remains safe. Those results are on the Safe Waters website. And then lastly, the joint base group did a multi-day Pearl Harbor Peninsula cleanup. They picked up twenty-five cars, two flat beds, sixty engines and transmissions, forty-five motorcycles and three hundred and fifty tires at removing. So we do look for opportunities to work with the community. I know there have been some homeless, uh, uh, initiatives to help with the, uh, moving some of the issues that are on, you know, whether it's the bike path or in the community. So thank you for the opportunity. You have our report and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you so much. Uh, were members any questions? Community? Oh, thank you. Uh, we will, moving, moving down to residents and community concerns. Um, does anyone in front of the community have? Anyone on the chat?
Uh, we do have someone who just said, uh, in chat, uh, Mr. James, are you still online?
Oh, he said he'll come next.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, um, well, we're moving down to elected officials. Um, Governor Green's representative.
Hi. Good evening, Chair, Vice Chair and members of the board and members of the community. I'm Janelle Sanishi, representing the Governor's Office and the executive branch. Uh, there were no questions for me from last session, uh, but, uh, and I would put you again to the Governor's Newsletter for July. You can get that governor.hawai.gov. They did want to emphasize one program that, um, is, has been expanded by the Hawaii Housing Finance and Development Corporation. It's for homeowners with mortgages, with mortgage assistance who have, um, suffered COVID, uh, uh, income losses. So they're expanding their program to allow from thirty thousand dollars to sixty thousand dollars in mortgage assistance for those who have lost income due to COVID since June, ju- since January twenty twenty. So if, um, there are some qualifications, but if people are still suffering, um, some financial problems with their mortgages. And it also does cover some homeowner's insurance, uh, payments and other HOA fees. So they should check out for Oahu. It's the Council on Hawaiian Advancement. Um, that is administering this, so. But that's about it. I can take any questions.
Maybe? No? Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Moving down to US Representative Ed Case, uh, Mr. Versamont. Okay, um, Senator, uh, Kai. Uh, Senator Brian Alefante. I believe Michael's on.
Hi, aloha, everybody. Um, I'm Michael from Senator Alefante's office and I just have a couple of quick things tonight, so I'll make them short. Um, like to also offer Senator's apologies for not being able to attend tonight as he's on the mainland. Um, we're happy to announce that, uh, Senator Alefante's bill SB forty-seven relating to transportation was signed into law by the governor last week. SB four nine seven, um, it prohibits large vehicles, ten thousand pounds or more, and most commercial vehicles from driving in the left lane, um, on roads and highways that have, uh, three lanes or more. And, uh, we went through a lot of back and forth with, uh, the DOT. Uh, they eventually supported it and also with the tourism companies and other commercial vehicle operators. And for the most part, we got most of them on board to, you know, be okay with it. Um, the bill was also cosponsored by the Transportation Chair, Senator Chris Lee, as well as the Water and Land Chair, Senator Lorraine N. Noe. And I want to say thank you to them for their support. Um, for anyone who hasn't received our newsletter in the mail, uh, we did send it out throughout the district over the last two weeks. Um, if you didn't get a copy and would like one, you can get one at the, um, hold on one second, I'll get you a link. Um, if you go to the Senator's webpage, um, there is a spot for links. And, uh, from there you can, um, get a copy of the newsletter, but I will put the link also in the, um, the chat box here. Give me one second. And, uh, you can easily download it there and, uh, get your own copy. If you have any questions, um, at all, please don't hesitate to contact our office. And, uh, that's all I have for tonight. Thank you for your time. I appreciate it, your patience.
Thank you, Mike. Um, any questions for members? No, community? All right, thank you, Mike. Um, moving down to Representative Nancy Chiama. Um, Representative Micah.
Hello, uh, we were not, are not. New positions. Good to keep this real short. Sorry, I came here last month. Uh, so if you didn't get a hard copy of my newsletter, I brought some for you. I'll join you guys online. Um, no real updates. I just want to make an announcement. The Prince Lock for the Festival, annual festival is going to be held this weekend on Saturday and then into four P M. It's going to be at the Frank Bossi Center. That's that weird concrete looking building in downtown. So I hope you can join us. I'll be there this Saturday. Any questions for them? Thank you.
Thank you, Rep. I, uh, or ever been a question. Community, no? Okay, um, we got to grab Sam Tong.
Okay. Um, shoot, all right. Only announcement I have is we will not be having a special session to override any vetoes. So that's it. Um, whatever the governor intends to veto, that'll, it'll go through. We're not gonna go on here anymore. And that's it. Anything?
Any questions for members? Community? Okay, thank you, Rep. Tong. Uh, Mayor Blanchard's representative, uh, DUC Director, Haku Melis.
Good evening, uh, Haku Melis with the Department of Design and Construction. Uh, just a couple of quick announcements. I'll try to get them, uh, read pretty quick. Um, rail passenger service begins on Oahu. Uh, a new era has begun for transit riders across the island of Oahu. Passenger service on Skyline, the city's new rail transit system officially began on June thirtieth. City leaders marked the occasion with a grand opening ceremony at the Halawa Station, featuring live music and remarks by Mayor Rick Blanchardi, Governor Josh Green, Senator Brian Schott and a number of other dignitaries. Uh, tax relief for homeowners in the fiscal year twenty-four budget. In June, Mayor Blanchardi signed the city council's adopted three point four one billion dollar operating budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-four. Uh, among the city's top priorities for fiscal year twenty-four budgets was a historic property tax relief for nearly one thousand five hundred, one hundred and fifty-two thousand qualifying homeowners on Oahu in the form of a one-time three hundred and fifty dollar tax credit amounting to roughly fifty-three million dollars, which will be applied directly to ta- property tax bills before they are distributed later this year. Um, two central Oahu pools reopen after repairs just in time for our popular Kiki Summer Fund Program. Two central Oahu pools are back open for business. Uh, the pool at, uh, Bill Balfour Junior Waipahu District Park reopened on April twenty-eighth after nearly six-year closure. Uh, Pearl City District Park Pool opened last month after nearly five-year closure. Uh, a quick update on the evil. A quick update on the Evilly Resource Center. The Evilly Resource Center is set to accommodate as many as 19 patients at a time with the goal to provide permanent housing for patients within one month. Next, $25 million more for their rental and utility relief program. City's rental and utility relief program is temporarily reopened this summer thanks to $25 million in state and local funding fiscal recovery funds from the Honolulu City Council. You can read more of these stories and city happenings at the newsletter online. Last announcement, for the second year in a row, Forbes has distinguished sitting county of Honolulu as among America's best employers by state ranking number two employer in Hawaii and number one in the state for government services. To explore career opportunities in the city and county of Honolulu, please visit www.governmentjobs.com/careers/honolulu. One carryover issue from months ago was the Halava Park Gate early closure request. So resident James Baptist raised concerns about parks with the park facility being used inappropriately by large groups of people, which resulted in many residents avoiding this park as they do not feel safe bringing their family and friends to enjoy the park. Baptist requested that the park's gates on Appella Street be closed around 7:00 p.m. to deter non-local traffic from congregating, tailgating, and participating in illegal activities. The board approved a motion supporting the closure request of Appella Street gates at 6:30 p.m. There was a quest to to Department of Parks and Recs of whether or not that will be considered or if they will continue to close at 10:00 p.m. So DPR spoke with Mr. Baptist on the phone on June 30th to inform him that DPR is unable to approve the request to close the gate at 6:30 p.m. due to the high amount of filled and un- and I'm sorry, and used courts by youth sports teams. DPR would be be meeting with D3, Honolulu Police Department, community policing teams to address multiple concerns such as illegal activities in the park and requesting more HPD presence. That is my report this evening, and happy to take any questions that you may have.
Okay, thank you. Our members, any questions? Community? No? Okay, thank you so much. Moving down to Councilmember Val Kimoto.
Aloha, good evening, everyone. Mahalo, Vice Chair, members of the board and members of the community. Councilmember Valakina Okimoto, for the record. Councilmember Cordero and I wanted to just start off, I know we're pressed for time, but Councilmember Cordero and I wanted to just offer our appreciation. And I know she's on Zoom with me as well, so we do have some appreciation certificates on behalf of she and I presenting to the board. And I welcome the new newly elected members of the neighborhood board. Are you on, Councilmember Cordero? Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you. So you should have the certificates passed out to all of you. If there's any new board members, we'd be glad to give that certificate to you, but we'll look forward to meeting the new board members, especially new board member Anderson there. Hi, I see you. Great to meet you, and we look forward to working with you.
Thank you. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Me too.
Mahalo, Councilmember Cordero. I'll quickly go through my report. I believe Jocelyn from my office was able to drop off my written report, and so you should have it in front of you. I just wanted to highlight a few things. As many of you have heard, the council recently passed Bills 37, 2022, and 40, 2022. Bill 37 increases the threshold income level for the tax credit from $60,000 to $80,000. And Bill 40 raises the homeowners and kupuna exemptions by $20,000, each raising it to $120,000 and $160,000 respectively. So 37 is a real property tax credit for homeowners whose property tax exceeds 3% of their income. And Bill 40 increases the exemption amount from, again, 100 to 120 for homeowners and 140 to 160 for kupuna. To qualify for Bill 37, you have to the tax credit, the combined combined income for all title holders for the property must not exceed $80,000, and the homeowner must file for the credit by September 20, 2023. So if you could make that note, there's a deadline for this exemption at September, September 30. I apologize, 2023. And as well as Bill 40, the same deadline, residents must file for their homeowner's exemption by September 30. Tomorrow, we do have a full council on July 12th. We'll be meeting a couple of bills to note will be Bill 39 relating to the real property taxation. And the purpose of this measure is to offer a real property tax exemption for residents in close proximity to the new landfill facility, which hasn't yet been determined. Bill 42 is also a real property tax bill that will be that will be introduced tomorrow. As these measures move forward, we'll keep you updated through the neighborhood board meetings. Finally, I want to just make note that on July 18th at 12:00 noon at the Pearl City Library, my office will be assisting Catholic charities and the Council for Native Hawaiian Advancement to host an in-person enrollment event for the city's rental rent and utility relief program. The in-person enrollment will begin at noon and run to 6:00 p.m. again at the Pearl City Library, and the address is 1138 Myono Home Road. So we will be posting this on my social media. It's in the newsletter, but please feel free to spread the word to your family and friends. And if you are planning on attending this event, please see my page of the newsletter for a list of required documents. It's on the newsletter that was presented to you. And I think that's all I have, other than my report. I'll take any questions you may have at this time.
Thank you, Councilmember. Our members, any questions? Uh, your member.
Well, Council.
Aloha.
Just to follow up in regards to the sign replacement over there on Hikaha and Wanaboa. If you'll be able to have any news about that. A small valley.
I believe, and I'm going to double check with Councilmember Cordero, I believe. And if I'm mistaken, I will find out. I believe this is actually in her jurisdiction. So let me work with her again, and if Raiden, if you're on, if this isn't the question that you're referring to, then I have to get back to you on that. I apologize. I think this was not actually in my jurisdiction. And what was the street names again, if you could repeat them?
Hikaha and Wanaboa.
Okay. If Councilmember Cordero doesn't have that in her jurisdiction, I apologize. I'll have an answer for you, and I believe she was going to take this this request on during her report. Thank you for the follow-up question.
Thank you. Okay. Community, any questions? Oh, there is a question on.
From Resident Jack.
Uh, Jack James.
Thank you, Chair. Councilwoman, on July 1st, your pay raise went into effect of $43,000. And in the June 7th budget meeting that included the salary increase, there was no line item for that. So have you been advised yet what city service or line item will be reduced in the budget to pay your salary?
Um, for this, no, we have not.
Okay, thank, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any more questions? Uh, thank you, Councilmember Okimoto. I will bring down Councilmember Raiden Cordero.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Raiden Cordero, your councilmember for the for Aia as well as Halava and Maquilapa. I just wanted to share with you all that, first off, I want to congratulate the Sergeant at Arms Vasquez, as well as the Treasurer Fitch, Secretary Arakaki, and Vice Chair Mizusawa for your elections. And also want to direct you to my report, which shares that the Aia District Park Pool will be closed this week for maintenance, and you'll see that information there. As for Hikaha Street Board Member, or excuse me, Secretary Arakaki, we have the we had the request for speed mitigation on Hikaha as opposed to the signage, but we'll definitely work on getting that sign concern addressed and working working with you. As you can see on my report here, that we are, they are conducting a speed speed, speed, I guess, study to be completed by September 2023. I also mentioned last month about the rechanalization of Uluna Street, but we just had that there included. I just want to go through, we had stuff in the budget here, but something that we talked about a lot was Pro Ridge Satellite City Hall changing their business hours. It is now going back to 9:00 a.m. What is a change, and it was actually changed to 10:00 p.m. because there is some concerns with management at Pro Ridge regarding early access and entry to the mall. So now there will be a place for people to meet. They would have to go to the top, second floor, or maybe third floor of Pro Ridge by the monorail, and they would have to be ushered in and by Satellite City Hall staff. So please be sure to find out information by alohaq.org as well as honolulu.gov/csd. Also, I have some bus route modifications, which you can see on my report as well as on thebus.org or on the website that Mr. Reed had on earlier, which was honolulu.gov/ Skyline. But I just wanted to make sure that you have my report, and I was able to respond to any questions from last month. And I'll work with Board Member Arakaki, or sorry, Secretary Arakaki to get the correct signage request submitted.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Thank you.
You. The report is kind of blurry to see, so, but the report is in our drive.
Yeah, we have some hard copies here.
Yes, and hard copies available if anyone's.
Yes.
Okay, our members, any questions? Um, any questions? Uh, Jack James? Jack? I love you, Jack. Thanks, you're muted.
Okay, thank, I'm sorry about that, Chair. Councilwoman, since you're Budget Chair, possibly you can answer my question as to where the money will be drawn from in the budget to pay for the horrible salary increases that occurred July 1st. Do you know what line item will, the money will be taken from to move to your sal- to the salaries?
Hi, Jack, I just wanted to let you know that what I am aware of, and which I believe our Administrative Services Advisor mentioned to the media as well, is that they're looking to see if there's any cost savings. You know, if there's less salary that is used in the salary amount. Let's say we have less staff for this year. It may come from that as well as if there's any money left in the salary. So we'll see. It normally will come from they'll know, they will normally determine it near the end of the next fiscal year or this fiscal year, I should say.
So we don't know at this time, correct, Councilwoman?
Correct. They don't know, they will not know until they have to look for savings, which will probably occur in the next, in the end of this fiscal year.
Thank you very much.
Mm-hmm, thank you. Oh, I'm still sharing, sorry.
Okay, any more questions? Okay, thank you, Councilmember Cordero.
Thank you.
We will be moving down to reports by board members regarding other meetings affecting I A A board business. Does anyone have anything to report? No? Okay. Uh, community reports. So Claire.
Hi, we're going to meet again next week, Monday. So we're going to keep our days on Monday, and we'll work around picking up the key on Friday and Saturday. I did distribute some of these to the group, and maybe I'll maybe I give it to Councilmember Vasquez. But I have two flyers. One is there's a, we're going to do an E-Waste Day on July 29th at I A Ongi from 9/11. So and there's no limit on TVs. Before it was a limit of one TV, but now there's no limit. There's certain things that you can recycle and not recycle. So I'll distribute that on July 29th. And there's on the backside of this is a caregiver workshop, training workshop, for those of you interested. It has a June 30th deadline, but disregard that. And if you're interested in signing up, you can still sign up for that, and that's going to be also at I A Ongi. And the last thing is there's a seniors helping seniors, basic smartphone for senior citizens. Some people have issues with their smartphone. So I have a few that can go out, but I can give it to the senior.
Okay.
There's a few more, sorry.
Oh, I'm sure it goes in there.
Thank you.
And so we have our senior meeting, and just to let you know, we are having our board dance. Welcome on July 22nd, Saturday. Parking is available at St. Elizabeth Church and I A Methodist. Yeah, come.
Is that it for your part?
Yes.
Okay, our members, any questions? Yes, our members.
Claire, what time is the board dance?
Board dance actually starts from 7:00 to 10:00. But people come really early, but parking won't open until about 6:00.
Oh.
Yeah, because there's hardly any, there's no parking really on site.
Okay. Okay, any more questions for Claire? No? Okay, moving down, thank you, Claire. Moving down to committees, executive, we'll skip transportation, sorry, who's Transportation Chair? I oh, no, I think we should someone else.
Oh, yes, it's Rob, it's Rob now.
Oh.
He's from the previous, any reports?
Oh, okay, so. Can we just?
Yeah, if there's any people, or you can squeeze through and.
Okay, does anyone have any? So I'll come. Okay. Yes.
An old report.
Oh, excuse me. Okay, Board Member Wipio. Okay, sorry, we're almost done, guys. Board Member Wipio is recording. Sorry.
I just wanted to be clear. The the event on July 27, 2023 is at Aliamano Middle School. It's for the invitation to Red Hill Field Sportsway Community Representation Initiative. The Department of D A G has been a partnership with EPA, our binding members of the public with the planning, even for the formation of the Red Hill Field Sportsway Community Representations Initiative. This initiative is being established under Red Bull Spots to be back received from the community through the 2023 consent order. They express desire for increased involvement in activities related to Red Hill and floodwater, and for the safe drinking water in the Navy water system as that to the patient of this important initiative. Something I spoke to Don Meech and the Navy people during their seminar open houses about getting more of the community involved somehow. And I like when they're kind of starting. I just don't know if I have to give it.
Okay. Uh, anyone have any questions? Uh, any other committee reports for now? No? Okay, um, keep, uh, or not?
Okay. It's just, wait, do we want to get announcements?
Not yet. Yeah, okay, but now we can.
Okay. Um, so, generally, it's kind of Tuesday, August 8th, 23.
Yeah, so that would, that's changed. Our next meeting will be on the 2nd Tuesday in September.
Okay.
Uh, which I
Not August.
No, August is, August is a reset month. And then September, whatever, this is in Tuesday.
Yeah, I can check for you real quick. The 2nd Tuesday will be September 12th.
Okay. Anyone else have any announcements? No?
I want to put up beautiful, yeah, I had to. Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
May, this is your iPhone.
Okay, I think that's it, so we will adjourn and I
Good job.
Whenever you're.
Yeah.
I go. I, I mean. I think you guys should just be able to carry it.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Ain't no.
I know. I know.